Last presentation scared everyone away for tonight's meeting. What happened? To fix this. Welcome back in from the field.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
One second, I just got dinner delivery. Be right back. All right. It looks like we're waiting just on the mayor. Um, Councilor Pranov, just that you know, Councilor Persino will not be able to make tonight's meeting.
Okay, well, I think we have like a three minute grace.
I have, I'm here.
You just made it.
Now, I was out in the other, I got relegated to the other room at the Budget Committee, so I was having, trying to get through here, so. Okay, so. First item on the agenda, let's see, we'll call this meeting to order May 18th. We'll call please.
So clerk.
Here.
Counselor Pranov.
Here.
Counselor Greider.
Here.
Counselor Persino is not with us today. Counselor Byers.
Here.
Counselor Paria Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Ayers Flood.
Here.
A mayor give a quorum.
The next item on the agenda is meeting accessibility. Hector.
Okay, this is a question for attendees. If anybody needs this meeting translated into Spanish, we ask that you raise your hand now. And I'll watch the attendees there.
Next item on the agenda is additions or corrections to the agenda. Anybody? All right, seeing none. Community announcements. Steph.
Hector, do you have any announcements, Russ?
Hey, everybody. We do have some announcements. We'd like residents to be aware that the weed abatement ordinance is in effect. After May 15th, all weeds and grasses that are six inches or taller must be mowed, cut or removed. And failure to do so may result in a fine. Tomorrow at 10:00 AM, the Jackson County. The Jackson County will test our citizens alert system, so please be aware that if you're, if you've opted into the system, you will receive a notification to test out the system. In addition, the Oregon Housing and Community Services will hold several events over the next two weeks to collect public comment on the disaster recovery action plan. So on May 19th and May 24th, there will be two meetings at the Talent Community Center from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. And the goal is to collect public comment. And that's going to happen at the Talent Community Center here in Talent, and it'll be in person. There's a native plant sale by the, by the garden club this Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00 PM at 55 Talent Avenue. It's a native, it's a focused plant sale about native plant species. The fire recovery, the fire resilience fair will host their, their resource fair. I'll pass that over to Counselor Greider if she, if she would like to let everyone know about it.
Oh, thanks, Hector. Yeah, at the Town Hall on Saturday, the 21st, from 12:00 to 3:00 PM. There's lots of community partners that will be there for housing assistance, resources. All the DCMs that are working with fire survivors access Catholic charities, zone captains. Lots of folks will be there. And there's free food, two food trucks.
And lastly, Representative Pam Marsh will host an ice cream social this Sunday at 3:00 PM in the Phoenix High School Commons, and all are welcome. And that's what I have for announcements.
Outstanding, Hector. Thank you so much. What a great update. Anybody from the council? Anybody else from the council? All right. Next item on the agenda is speakers heard on non-agenda items. Hector, are there any speaker request forms?
Mayor, there are two. We received. A request from Dan Hauser and also Ally French. Those are our speakers to be here on non-agenda items, and we also have one for our speaker. We have a speaker on an agenda item, Mr. Ron Lopheimer for Agenda Item 7.
Very good. So if we can bring forward. Dan Hauser. Dan, please state your name and your city for the record.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Dan Hauser. I work with Camelot Theater in Talent, Oregon.
Go ahead.
Did you get that?
Yes, the floor is yours.
Okay, I'm the executive director of Camelot Theater, and I just wanted to, again. Bring up the issue. We had a tree planted in front of the theater, and it was a oak tree, right smack in the front of the theater. It was an issue because we had two customers that actually plowed through the intersection because the tree is planted about six to eight feet in front of the stop sign. They're at Talent and Main Street. Two customers came into the theater yelling at us, to the point where one of our box office personnel was in tears because one person was going off them so much for planting a tree in front of the stop sign. We explained to them that that was not our doing, it was the city's doing. It wasn't understandable that that was not blocking the tree. It was a small tree. I called the city to notify the city that this was an issue. And it's obviously a reasonable safety issue when customers are going through the intersection. And again, this is a small sapling tree. It's an oak tree, very small, and that's covering the stop sign to the point where people don't see it. Called the city three times and said this really needs to be moved before someone gets hurt. And unfortunately, no one returned my phone calls, and this was during COVID. So not wanting that tree to be rooted and get in there deeper and then have to kill the tree. I asked our landscapers to move it over so it was away from the stop sign, so it wouldn't have that problem, and they put it about maybe 40 feet away from the stop sign in another spot at the theater, so they would still use the tree, but in a safer spot and a better location for it. I also then found out from the tree committee that someone noticed the tree missing, and they noticed it was replanted, and I called this, and I actually went to one of their meetings to address that issue. And again, I apologize for moving it, but I didn't want the tree to get rooted before too long and then have to lose that tree, because I really think the mission of what the tree committee is doing is wonderful. I mean, we've lost a lot of trees to the fire, and I think we need to replant some of these trees. But there was a clear safety issue, and customers were going through. Now, I don't know if a lot of folks know, but we have a lot of older patrons at Camelot Theater. And I would probably say some of these customers probably shouldn't be driving, but they are driving. And their reactions are probably not the sharpest, so by the time they see these things, it's just a danger for people walking the crosswalks or cars that are crossing over Talent Avenue. Apparently, they've put the tree back, because this week there were some workmen that put the tree back, a different tree in that spot. And I actually saw them, and I went out and I asked them, why are you doing this? There is actually a clear issue here. And I also looked in the ODOT policy on planting in front of stop signs. It was a violation of that policy. And they said they were doing this because they were ordered to by their boss, one of the counselors, or city council members. And I said, okay, I don't know what the situation is here. Clearly, someone's not getting the message that there's a safety issue. People are going to be hurt here. So this is not personal for me. I don't have any issues or ill feelings toward this tree. I just want the counselor, the council to know there is a problem. There is a clear issue of safety here. And I think the tree really is going to be causing more problems. This tree is actually, actually a better looking tree. It's wider, and it actually blocks the stop sign even more so than the last one did. But I'd like this to be submitted to the report so that it is on record that there is probably a concern of safety, and that if someone is hurt, I want to make sure that Camelot has reported this to the city and to the council so they can do what they need to do. After this, I really don't need to follow up with the city council from this point of view. I think you guys can take the matter and look into it. I'm just concerned that it's not getting to the right people to look at this from a safe standpoint.
Okay, Dan, I just want to let you know, and also any other speakers heard on non-agenda item, I try to remind every time that we don't have a discussion at speakers heard on non-agenda items, but we are able to bring the matter back up if we want to discuss it briefly or advance it to another agenda at Agenda Item Number 11. So that's not to encourage you to stay here all night long. That's really tedious, but it is often the case that when somebody talks about something on non-agenda item, we bring it up again at other, which is near the end of the agenda. Thank you so much. Next speaker is Allison French. Ally, speak your, please state your name and your city for the record.
Hi, Ally French. I live in Talent, Oregon. I am, I'm the executive director with Talent Maker City, I think probably most of you know that. And Talent Maker City is respectfully requesting $1,000 in discretionary funds to support the secret tiny park project. Am I even allowed to talk about it at council? Do you all know what I'm talking about when I say the secret tiny park project? Okay, you do. Look at the nodding. Shh, keep it on the DL. The funds would be used to pay for supplies and materials for stepping stone workshop that we're conducting for eight stepping stones to be placed around the tiny park. Participants who are members of the garden club who have been instrumental in getting the tiny park project going will create the stepping stones out of mosaic tiles and specialized concrete over a two-day workshop with a secret visiting public art artist. How's that for dramatic? Okay. The stepping stones are going to surround the park and have a pollinator theme to match the park. The funds requested would also include the signage that Talent Maker City would make for the park. We're going to make a tiny sign to commemorate the park that will be tiny, but will also make a larger sign that everybody could read. So we want to stick with the tiny theme. And the inscription, as I understand it, is still to be determined. We were also approached by Gerlinda to see if we could help with a tiny metal rod iron fence to go around the park, which we are excited and happy to do. I have not sourced out those supplies and materials, but we do have an artist who would be willing to help with a workshop around that, and I anticipate additional funds for the metal and everything to be around 300, but I'm not prepared to ask for those funds tonight, because I haven't done enough research about the metal rod iron fence to feel like I know what I'm talking about. But requesting $1,000 right now for the stepping stone workshop, two days, material supplies, mosaic tiles, and to pay for the artist and the workshop and admin costs for TMC. The end.
Thank you, Ally, and as we will have an opportunity to discuss that when we get to other and, and future item.
Great. Thanks for considering. Hope the rest of the meeting goes well. Thank you.
Hey, can I ask a quick question? When is the class?
Monday and Tuesday next week, and Talent Maker City is happy to front the costs upfront and even donate some of it. What a beautiful, wonderful project. We can allocate some funds for this if, if need be, and I'm sure the garden club and one of, they offered to help pay for it if we can't get the discretionary funds. But we only have this surprise visiting artist available on Monday and Tuesday next week.
Okay, so thank you, Ally. Always good to hear from you. The next item on the agenda is item number six, which is department reports. Steph?
Yes, you all have the summary of the department report. In the agenda packet, happy to answer any questions. A couple items did not make it into that report that I just love to share out loud because they're larger scale projects in our community. So the West Valley View Road reprofile, progress is being made, the, on the sidewalk and approach replacement, asphalt grinding and the street light location adjustment. Next step in this process is going to be excavation for the bioswales. So expect to start seeing those things happen soon. Another update that the non, that the playground, pardon me, play structure for the creek side playground has been ordered. That was more of a mouthful than I expected. A new irrigation system was installed in Wagner Park this week. This replaces an old inadequate system, which is great to have in place, particularly before fire season really hits us. And then just a new update of something that we will have to do this year that we haven't done before is that the Safe Drinking Water Act requires the Environmental Protection Agency to monitor unregulated contaminants in drinking water. And this includes populations of towns our size now. Previously, we've been removed from this requirement because we were too small, but we are now included. But we will start taking four samples of our water systems over a 12-month period starting this coming year. And we'll continue doing that on a five-year schedule so that we will know if there's any issues within our water, on top of all of the water testing we already do. And with that, I'll turn it back to council for any questions.
Any questions on the staff report? Counselor Pranov.
Thank you. I think this is a question for Kristen. So I was, I was looking at the, these excellent permit counts, and I'm so glad that you do, but I was confused, like, for example, rapazalia lithia, where the app submitted is less than the permits issued. And I had thought that was, I, I'm not sure I understand the report if, if that's accurate.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, I failed to put in the actual permits issued. That has been updated. I'm not sure if Jordan was able to put that out this evening. So there was, as I recall, there was four additional permits in Oak Valley, one on rap and one or two on the azalea. I don't have them in front of me right now, but I think Jordan can help with that as well.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, I guess I wanted to make sure that I understood how to read it and that, so you have a house is lost in the fire. The person submits the application, so they count as one there. Then they go to permits issued. They're still counted as one and app submitted and permits issued. Is that right?
That's, that's correct.
When they pick up. Okay, that's, that's what I want to make sure, because if it was, at one point, we were doing it differently and before your time, so I just want to check on that. So thank you.
I have a couple of questions. I wanted to find out on the ARPA funding, I had a, not on the ARPA funding, I'm sorry, it was on the small business micro enterprise CDBG grant. That was the COVID grant that SO Ready helped us with and, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And so 60,000 has been allocated, and, and my understanding is that SO Ready is opening that back up on, is it already open?
I just received the contract amendment this week. So yes, it has been extended, and the eligibility has also expanded now to include additional businesses. Um.
Go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead, Mayor. I'll follow.
Um, well, no, actually, that, that was, you were, you were tracking on the question I was going to ask, so I apologize for interrupting. So I have a couple of questions about it. Is when you say it's expanded to include other businesses, then I thought I heard somebody mention that it was being included to include businesses from outside the city. Did I understand that correctly?
So. Yes, and I'm going to explain that a little further. So my understanding is the way that the grant originally worked is that the business had to be in talent and had to employ talent employees. What they found in administering this grant is that there's a lot of cross pollination between cities in our valley, and so it was hard for a lot of businesses to be eligible for this grant. What this grant does now include is it could be a business that has employees from Ashland, from Phoenix, or from the Jackson County area, rather than just talent. And then vice versa, if they have, if a national business has talent employees, it could also help them. But I will say that Kim Young at SO Ready is the one administering this grant. And I'm happy to set up a meeting to get the more particulars of how it, the operation of it works.
I would like to express my concern about that, in that in that I, my understanding about some of the difficulties in getting that grant has been, in, in talking to some of the businesses, was really just how complicated the grant was. And so I, I definitely can see talent-based businesses with employees outside of the area is one way to expand so that the businesses can apply. But, but I would, I guess I would want to know what the basis, I, I would hope that we could see what the basis is for doing the, the opposite of that. Like, what is the, you know, what, what's the feedback or what's the data that they have that, and, you know, sort of inspired that decision. And and then also, because I mean, I've heard and from businesses that outreach was a big part of the issue as well. I I just want to make sure that your, that your office is getting all of that feedback as well, so that whatever changes are being made are, are, are baselined on, on some of that feedback. And I trust that it would be. I just want to make sure that those same, that same feedback came back, came to you as well.
It did, and I will say there's two. So the two solution, well, I shouldn't say solution, because one didn't have a solution. I did approach the grant folks and CDBG folks about changing the eligibility process, so the requirements for applying for the grant, and that was not I was not able to amend the actual application process. But the second part was the outreach, and I've actually contacted Talent Business Alliance to see if they'd be willing to partner in helping spread the word of this grant so that we can make sure folks know about it and can apply to it and get a good chance of, of receiving the funds.
Yes, and I, speaking, you know, speaking a little bit on behalf of that, it, my next question was going to be, have they already started? Because we haven't heard back from them about how we can partner with them, and it sounds to me like it's been explained by that, they're just not quite ready yet. They're not quite there. It sounds like you guys are still working out the agreement.
Yes, probably. What I'll do, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So this is what I'll do for follow-up, is I will, I will send a follow-up email tomorrow, because I am concerned if they haven't reached back out to you. And then two, I will invite them to come present the grant at our next available council meeting so that you all can be up to date and spread the word as well as for our community, for folks applying.
Right. And is there any room for any further discussion about the eligibility for it?
I'm sure there always is. Yeah.
I, I, I just, again, I would, I would hope that we have an opportunity to evaluate what, what data they have that would ask them to, that would allow them to, to go outside of our community, outside of our community businesses, and I mean, I definitely understand what the thinking is, but I don't know if there's a basis of of reality. And I just want to be able to discuss that further before that decision is final. Is that is it is it too late for that?
You know, I don't think it's too late. It would just require an additional amendment, which is doable. They've been really flexible to work with and they want to you know, their goal is to make sure the money gets out to the community. And so they're willing to help figure out how best to make that happen.
Yeah, and I don't doubt any of that. So please don't hear anything other than that. It's just wanting to make sure that we're prioritizing the businesses that are in the community who really had a difficult time with this in the first place. So yeah, I I do want to say in also fairness is that I ran into Kim in the community, but there was not a an effort to get together. And and what I was hoping was to learn the prop, you know, to to for us that are volunteering to help businesses. And there's a couple of us on the council here that we would be able to learn the process, whoever wanted to learn the process so that we could offer that technical assistance as well. And so that's it for me on that one. And then I have another question. Thank you so much. My real quick question is, somebody let me know that that they thought that this was originally provided for through the city and was the grant portal through the city originally?
I would have to look at the history of the grant. I don't know. I know that we contact was so ready as the subgrante administrator. I'm not sure if that occurred before the grant wasn't initiated or after. I will follow up.
I just, if it's not, it's there's reason for me to follow up with that business and clarify what there might be another fund that she's looking at. Okay. And then my other question is that it the it it seemed to me as I was going through this grant grid that some of the grants, some of the information may not be updated. Are these updated? How regularly are the is this information updated?
Um, I update this information pretty much a couple of days prior to our council meetings, the third council meeting of the month. Though I must admit that my brain has been entirely budget focused these last three weeks, so it is less robust than I typically like.
That's totally fair. And if I have any, I mean, I do have a couple of questions, but I can take them up. I don't have, I don't need the answers tonight, so I can take them up later. I just wanted to make sure that my questions were legit based on based on my understanding when it was last updated. Okay, great. All right, that's it. Any other questions? All right, let's move on the agenda then. Thank you for the great information. As as always, it's being presented in a really, really clear, understandable way. And we I speaking for, I think, most of us, we really value that. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing, seven point one text amendment to TMC section 2.20 Planning Commission, continued from the meeting of May 4, 2022. Staff report?
Yeah, so this entire process was started several months ago, recognizing that that we have been struggling with the issue of quorum in our planning commission and that we're running up against deadlines often where if a project is not reviewed by the planning commission within a specific time period, it does become automatically approved. So we were looking at ways that we could help reduce that issue from occurring. At the time, planning commission was looking into and discussing removing quorum from the ordinance and having it just in their bylaws to define. And that gives more flexibility about changing the definition of quorum if the commission and council so decides. Also making city council as a backup group to listen to any project reviews in the event the planning commission could not meet in time before those deadlines. Um, the planning commission did discuss and they did make several recommendations. This was elevated to city council for this public hearing that occurred on May 18. Um, between that may, sorry, the public hearing on May 4, where several other ideas were brought up during that meeting and staff asked for the time to go to the city attorney to vet those as well as to help make language more clear. Because there was concerns about if the way that had been drafted did not achieve intent. Um, the city attorney has returned her review of those sections. We bring it back to the public hearing tonight because it is a continuance of the public hearing. The staff does recommend because there are so several new ideas that were not discussed by planning commission to send it back to planning commission for their recommendation before coming back to council with potential ordinance language. So with that, Mayor, what we willing to do tonight is we willing to open the public hearing, I believe, because it's a continuance. We do have one speaker on this item. And then we can close the public hearing and council can decide what action they'd like to take.
Okay, so I need to reopen the hearing.
Correct? Fill up the language. Yes.
Okay, opening statement for legislative public hearing. The Talent City Council has the authority to hold legislative hearings in accordance with Oregon Public Meeting Laws as described in ORS 192.610 through 192.710. The Talent City Council makes the final decision to approve, modify, or deny. The city planner has determined that the approval criteria that apply to the following application or issue currently before the city council are as follows.
Title 18 of the Talent Municipal Code and Title 2 of the Talent Municipal Code.
Evidence and testimony in this hearing must be directed towards these criteria or other criteria in the city zoning code, comprehensive plan subdivision code, or other applicable land use and development related regulations that the person believes apply to this decision. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient clarity and detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond accordingly to the issue precludes appeal in the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Before the end of the hearing, any participant may request a continuance. In addition, whether or not there is a continuance, a participant may request that the record of the proceedings remain open for at least seven days after the hearing. The city council will consider whether or not they will continue the hearing or leave the record open for a specified length of time or new written testimony or evidence. When called to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and residential address for the public record. Please direct your comments to the applicable criteria as identified by staff. The following time limits are allotted for public testimony. Applicants 15 minutes, individuals five, an individual representing a group 10, applicant rebuttal 10. After listening to testimony and considering the evidence, the city council may vote to approve approve with conditions or deny the application unless the matter is continued or tabled to another date specific meeting. If you have any questions or you do not understand the procedure, please raise your hand and ask them now. Okay, with that, I'll open the public hearing at 7:39. Are there any speaker requests?
Mayor Ron Lopheimer submitted speaker request.
Great, thank you, Hector. So we'll bring Ron Lopheimer forward and please, Ron, state your name and residential address for the record.
Here, I'm Ron Lopheimer. I live at 146 Hilltop Road in Talent. I'm a member of the South Talent Neighborhood Association Council. First of all, I'm came to you initially, was concerned about these amendments, proposed amendments. I'm very happy with the staff report and recommendation that it goes back to the planning commission for further study and maybe a recommendation coming back to you all. The reason I wanted to speak today was that I was hoping that council would give some guidance to the planning commission on two particular points that were raised in the staff report, which I'd like to mention now. And then that's all I really have to say now because I'll participate at the planning commission level. The first one is that section 2.1 of Talent Municipal Code, 2.20.30. If the mayor or ex officio city council councillor votes on the matter, there's nothing in the proposed language before you at the moment that specifically states that he or she cannot vote on any appeal that comes to the city council. And that was a recommendation that is in that staff report. And all I'm suggesting is that you give guidance to the commission that they include that language specifically in that code section that I just stated to you. That that's first point. The second point is this has to do with section 2.20.100. And right now, the way it is drafted, it states that if the city council acts as the planning commission for land use matters, that any appeal will be taken to the land use Board of Appeals. The recommendation in the in the staff report or a recommendation from the city attorney is that that should be modified, that language be modified to say that any appeal should go to a hearing officer rather than through the long process and detailed expensive process of the land use Board of Appeals. And I would recommend or hope that the city council would give guidance to the planning commission to include the city attorney's recommendation when they consider the matter. Those are the two issues that I at least wanted to raise to the city council at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopheimer. Okay, are there any other speakers on this item? I have a raised hand out of the audience from Hourley. If you want to unmute. Spelling on your raised hand is O U R L Y. Do you want to unmute? We have, okay, can you state your name and residential address for the record, please? I see that you've unmuted, but we are unable to hear you. There we go. Hello? Mr. Hourley, do you wish to speak on this item? No, looks like we lost him. Okay. So if there's no other speakers on this item, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I have a question of staff. One of the things that I was wondering is why did it come to the council? I know that there was not a quorum and the item and the item just moved straight to the council. From there, was there, I I understand there was some discussion at the last meeting. I wasn't there. So was it, did the planning commission ask to move it? Or did staff bring it to us? I'm not sure. I understand why it came to the May 4. May 4 agenda.
I can answer that question. The ordinance did go before the quorum and was voted on. It was a 3-1 vote in favor of passing it on to the city council. I think what you may be remembering is there wasn't a quorum to for the bylaws. We took the bylaws at the last meeting, I believe, and there was not a quorum. So we did not hear the they have not reviewed the bylaws yet. If that helps.
Okay, so thank you. That does help because that's exactly how I had it wrong. So this came to us with a recommendation. I just want to make sure I remember the series. This came to us as a recommendation and the council recommended two of the four items that are here as a possible amendment. And then there was a consensus on that, if I remember, if the minutes reflect accurately, that there was a consensus taken for those items to go to the attorney for an opinion, a review. Does that sound right? Do I have it right so far?
So the ordinance was voted on, we had a 3-2 vote on the ordinance to pass that on to city council. But then there was, there was discussion about concern that there was no, I think Commissioner Davis brought up the concern that there was no write up in regards to taking it to a hearings officer if if in fact the council did act on behalf of the planning commission. And so there was a concern about who would hear that appeal in that case. And then when we brought the bylaws to council, Commissioner Davis was again concerned about that and asked that it go before the city attorney. Initially, the city attorney did help out with writing the proposed ordinance. But we had her review again and have gotten a little bit different opinion from her. So we're going with this, her latest revision and review of the ordinance. And that's why there have been so many changes to it. And we're asking that it go back to planning commission to review again and go through the process once more.
So I, so I'm having a little difficult time tracking and I know it's because I was absent at that last at that one planning meeting, but I definitely want to have the order of business in in mind here as we go. So the the ordinance came before us. That's that's what was continued from the last one with a recommendation and a three to one vote to recommend it. And the the suggested amendments were made during that item, that agenda item by the council in the last meeting, correct? That's correct, right? Okay, so, okay.
Yeah, go ahead. Couple of comments submitted by email also have added to recommendations.
Okay, and then and so so the the council heard those recommendations from the emails at the last meeting. And those of the four that are listed here, and I know this is a little bit rhetorical because I know this to be true. Two, the first two are from the council consensus that was taken at the last meeting. And the last two were recommendations or options. I don't even think there were recommendations or options that the the city attorney is providing in addition to what we had a review on, correct? Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure that that all of that was laid out in order so that so that I have it straight in my mind. Because as you can see, I was off in bylaw land, so I appreciate getting this clarity. Counselor Panomaroff, did you have your hand up?
I did. And my feeling is that I can understand why some of these are rather complex and that that could benefit from the planning commission, having a look at them. I think some of them have already been before the planning commission. So I was going to request that somebody do a screen share and show this, the word document that's in the packet that says recommended text amendments. Because that was very clear to me. And what I was, what I have a mind to do is to make a motion to accept some of those about which the there's, there's, there seems to me to be quite a bit of clarity. And then let the rest of those go back to planning. Specifically, the ones that were spoken to in in the meeting. So can I can I continue? I don't want to.
Well, let me, so it sounds to me like you're about to make a motion, which I'm happy to entertain. Once I've made sure that everybody's had a chance to speak. Is that, did it, am I tracking you right?
I was gonna, I was gonna do a little preamble before. But yeah, that's that's where I was going.
Well, you you still can do your preamble, whether you wanted, you can do it now or
Okay.
But what I will do is open the discussion up really quick for questions for everybody before I entertain a motion, if that makes sense.
Sure, absolutely. So I was just going to discuss the intent of my, the intent of where I was going. So we can't make this bigger. Oh, yes. Thank you so much. So so I think the very first one, that's the language clarification, the JR1 is just non controversial, that just clarifies everything. And then we took out the the limitation of the urban growth boundary because we saw, I think, that almost all of our committees and commissions don't have that limitation. And people might want to talk about that, but I think it's clear what that's doing. And then the part about except Um, and then uh, the part about except uh, when a quorum was, is not present, I would just. I would not include that at this point. That's, that's a change and I think that's the one that's been spoken to as a little. Iffy of what happens with recusal and all of that. And I also wanted to say that um, I really don't understand how this is legal. Uh, because in the state law, under membership, it says you can have up to two city officers. As non-vent, non-voting members. So I just don't, it seems to be very clear that they're not supposed to be voting. So I'm a little bit confused about that. So. That I was thinking, hey, just pass that, pass that, let's not, let's not deal with that at this point. Let's ignore that. And then the other part that I thought was fairly clear uh, that we wanted to do was to take out that first sentence and that's JR four. Which um, so, so we don't, so we no longer have um, that quorum. We just do normal quorum. And then all of that planning commission unable to act, da, 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 just ignore that for now. So basically. Um, if you could scroll up just a little bit. My motion would be, I'd, and I can, and I can cut, read it, read it as text or um, phrase it in some way. Is to accept the JR one, JR two. And uh, JR four. I think those are, those are the three that we have clarity on. And that we can just get that done. So uh, planning commission can function better. And then the rest of the stuff could be uh, either sent back to the planning commission or they can, we don't even have to direct staff to do that. Maybe just let them take it up as they see fit.
Um, okay, are there any other um, comments or questions from any of the other count, are there any comments or questions? Okay. Uh, so I'll, I'll bring it back to Council Perry Miller.
Thank you. Sorry, I had trouble finding my hand. Um, I was just going to say that I agree with Councilor Ponamarif. And um, I would support moving this forward so that the commission can start functioning a little bit better.
Council Clark?
Maybe I'm not tracking. Are we about, there's the recommended motion to send it back to planning and then they would look at it again and they would recommend it back to us. So they're not funk, no. I'm not tracking this. I am tracking this. Okay. So I'm just, I would say allowing the commission to function, it seems like they need to have a quorum in order to take this up. Um, and that that's a couple of steps. That's another step before it comes back to us and. Becomes the law of the land. Am I, am I off track there?
Council Panamara, are you, do you want to respond?
Yeah, I, I, um, that was not what I was trying to say as I was laughing, talking. Um, I, what I was trying to say that what my motion do, would do is um. Make those changes, JR one, JR two, JR four now. And then leave it at that. And um, at that point, we could say, we could direct. Planning to look at it, or we could just not say anything and leave it up to planning's discretion. Whether to um, take up those other items, which are, which are a little bit more complex. But my, my intent was to have, have this decided tonight as far as the quorum stuff goes.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think it's necessary to direct staff to take the other items back. Uh, planning commission, it can be forwarded to the chair and the planning commission and the uh, the complaining chair and. Um, the, the community development director is certainly. Certainly welcome to con- continue the discussion. So, but if this, if the council wants to direct staff, that's, I, there's no reason not to either, I guess. Jordan?
Um, one just potential rule of order, and then I'd love to add a comment. First off, I believe the public hearing is still open.
Um, oh, I thought I closed it. I'm, I'm pretty sure I closed it.
Did you really? Oh, goodness gracious. Turns out I just blanked out for that moment, then we're good. Um, my comment that I'd like to make tonight is one thing that gives me concern is that the ex officio member for the planning commission is not present tonight. And I know that he did have some thoughts on these changes. Um, my also concern about moving these recommendations forward, particularly JR two. Is that the planning commission has not considered that. Um, and it does make a substantial change to um. Who is eligible to be on the planning commission itself. And I also, you know, I have concerns around. That specific language change that I'd like discussion because it does allow really anyone to serve on that position. They could be uh, someone from California, they could be someone from elsewhere. Doesn't place great boundaries to make sure that their talent connected. So those are just thoughts they wanted to add to the conversation.
Council Panamara?
Yeah, I think those are really good thoughts. Um, the thing is, we've had, we've had the problem getting people and we've had the problem keeping people. Um, I think we've lost several good commissioners who have just either moved away temporarily or moved away. And um, one of the things that we do have in place is that anybody who is appointed to the commission has to be appointed by the mayor. So that's the first, um, the first check. And then the council has to approve and that's the second check. Um, so I'm not really worried about um, there being just anybody. Um, being appointed to the commission because we do have those checks in place. Um, I just think the UGB boundary is somewhat arbitrary. Um, there's lots of people that have. Uh, I think in, in interesting could be very helpful and useful um, to the planning commission and that's. Um, and that's what we try to get is, is people that, that are useful and, and can help. And, and just to add, there's, there is, it's a hard learning curve um, to get there.
Uh, Jordan?
Thank you. You know, in, in conversations that I had with the attorney and I believe actually in the memo she wrote for us to know if, if these elements were okay to move forward with or not. She made the recommendation of several different options to help clarify that language. You know, are you, are you GB? Is our expected twenty year boundary for the city? You know, I think there is a, a good reason that's the definition and the planning commission is a very particular type of commission. Um. There really necessitates that strong tide of talent to really look for that talent community growth. Um, I'm not saying this isn't a, a, a good move or the right move, but I would like to just have more time for input by the folks who are directly involved right now to hear more voices. Um, particularly Counselor Pestejo. Um, who did call me before this meeting concerned about this topic because he couldn't make a nice meeting and he did want to raise his voice. Um, on this topic.
He also called me and um, we talked about it and he did, he is not, not in favor. He does not support this, whether it's. In front of the planning commission or in front of uh, the council. Um, uh, I explained to him that it's a regular practice for the council to make amendments to recommendations that come before us. So. It's not out of order and um, and that I would entertain uh, the motion if, if that's what the, uh, please the council. I also invited him to send in his comments in writing and that um, either myself or you could read them into the record and. Um, uh, so um, he opted not to do that, but I'm happy to relay to everybody that he expressed. Um, similar concerns uh, that Jordan just said, that he doesn't support the idea of um. Of having a member as a council member, not as a planning commissioner, but as a council member doesn't support having somebody outside the UGB. So uh, that, that's what we have uh, so far. And I checked my email just before the meeting to see if David sent in that, uh, any of his comments and he did, he, he did not. Uh, I do have a couple of comments on this as well. Um, we lost two really good planning commissioners to people moving out of town. Both of which have uh, our taxpayers in this community. They both own homes in this community and they still do. One was Amy Bull. And we really contemplated whether or not to, um, because the language as it stands was nebulous enough where to the letter of the law, we probably could have uh, kept her seat. Um, but we argued that the spirit of it, uh, the way it was uh, written, it was probably an accident that it was written the way it was. But that didn't preclude uh, our desire to have somebody like Amy Paul still back on uh, the council. She was an ex, I mean, commission, she was an excellent commissioner. And the same uh, for uh, Commissioner or. Well, Commissioner and then Counselor Derek Volkart, who left our community is moved, he has a talent address, but. He owns property in talent and he, he's a taxpayer in talent. He has an interest in talent. He's a stakeholder. Um, so like, that is part of the reason this discussion is, I think, coming up and um. Um, in, you know, we've had um. We've had members, uh, we have other committees and commissions, including the Parks Commission, uh, that allow. People from outside the city limits and it's never posed a problem because really it is the mayor's, it's at the mayor's discretion. The other thing that I think gives me a lot of comfort. In this idea and why I support this idea is because um. The ORS itself says, um, and I just, I'm going to point it out to, it was in a, we got a um, a memo from the. The attorney, um, and it's in that memo, but it's not in the staff report or if it is, I missed it, but it says uh, clearly who can be a member. And who, you know, and it, and it, it doesn't state that, um, here's what it says, members of the commission, uh. Let's see here, where is it? Do I have the right? It consists of five, seven or nine? I, I'm, I have the wrong one. So um, I, I won't try to find it. Uh, I might look for the memo. Uh, does somebody have the memo?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, would you read it from the memo?
Am I allowed to read it from?
Oh.
From a confidential memo?
Privileged? I mean, we got it in our email, so it's not privileged. Yeah, right?
Uh, I'm going to defer to Jordan on that because I think.
Would you cite the ORS number and all?
Yeah, sure. I can, I can give you the ORS.
I'm just, I'm just trying to read the ORS.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's not confidential.
I think it's two, two, seven, zero.
Two, two, seven, zero, three, zero?
Yeah, I was, I was in two fifteen, so sorry.
Don't worry.
Um. Anyway, it says uh. Not more than two members of a city planning commission may be city officers who shall serve. As ex officio non-voting members. A member of such a commission may be removed by the appointing authority. After hearing for misconduct or non-performance of duty. Any vacancy in such a commission shall be filled by appointing authority. For the unexpired term. And then it says no more than two voting members. Of the commission may engage principally in the buying, selling or developing of real estate. In other words, no more than two real estate or developers. Um, or be members of any partnership or officers or employees of any corporation that engages principally in buying, selling. Or developing uh, real estate for profit. Uh, no more than two members shall be engaged in the same kind of occupation, business, trade or profession. Um, so I mean, I also appreciate that language for the, uh, for the fact that I think one of the biggest concerns of bringing um. Bringing in a, a lot of, you know, a, a, any more than one person from outside the community is that they would have a real estate interest. And so um. So again, this is one seat that's being offered up um, to uh, members who might. And I, I'm wondering if uh, if it does make any sense to add language that would suggest that they also hold interest in the community, if that was your intention. Council Panamara, I mean, I'm not married to it, but. Go ahead.
Uh, you know, I, I just, I really don't think that's necessary. I think for the, um, I mean, I wouldn't object to it. Uh, probably, but I, I don't think it's necessary and it kind of, you know, it starts to smack, smack of land ownership. Um, as, as being, you know, more important. So. You know, I, I think that one member, um, it'll help with quorum, it'll help those issues. There was a third person who moved away temporarily and then came back. Who had, had to leave um, because of this requirement. Um, I think, yeah, so I'm, I'm not really. I don't think we need a restriction. Um, I'm happy to uh, put forward a motion that's um. JR one, JR two and JR four uh, of the comments we were looking at. And if somebody wanted to amend that or would prefer to separate out JR two. Um, that would, might be one way to approach it. I'm kind of interested in hearing um, if other people share. Uh, Counselor Pesteza's um, concerns, which I think you represented really well, Jordan.
I'm going to also check my email one more time just to make sure. Um, Council Clark?
Yeah, um, my thought on that is, is, um, as you said that uh. That it's the mayor's appointment um, with council approval. Um, and that. The mayor is not going to appoint somebody that isn't tied to the, strongly tied to the community that, um, you know, that that person believes that. Uh, is going to be invested in their role, in, in their public service role. And an appropriate fit for that. So I don't have any concerns. It's consistent with other. Um, with some of the other uh, committees and commissions and I would support it.
Definitely want to make sure we've talked this, uh, everybody's had an opportunity to be heard on this. Um, because there may be differing opinions. Counselor Panamara, did you?
I, I'm ready for a motion, but I, you might want to give people another two seconds to.
Definitely am. Counselor Byers?
Yeah, I, in, in theory, and in the majority of the practice of these motions, I'm supportive and I, I see. All of the issues that these um, items are addressing. And yet also I, I do think that it is um. We're lucky to have the mayor we have right now, but we don't always know who the mayor will be. And so I'm wondering if these um, motions place a lot of trust in the leadership that we have. Right now, as opposed to the leadership we may have down the road decades from now or whatever that, that timeline may be. And it's just one item that is lightly. Uh, highlighted for me as I'm considering all of this in our discussion.
Council Byers, anybody else? All right, how will entertain a motion? Council Panamara?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I move that we approve uh, the following amendments. To uh, Talent Municipal Code, Section two dot two oh. Uh, JR one, the language clarification. JR two, the removal of residential requirement and JR four. Removing quorum definition from the code.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, um, I. Can you put it in the chat, please?
I didn't type it up yet, but yeah, I'll do that next.
I'll wait for it. Um, just because I, I, I'm not always on the same page as y'all because I'm reading the agenda and I'm reading the.
So that was kind of a shortened abbreviated version, but I think it's, I think it's, and I'll, I'll defer to um. Our city manager, is that enough for as far as clarity as the intention of the motion?
You know, I asked just for one piece of clarity and this is. And another language clarification that's not highlighted, but I'm going to consider subsetting underneath JR one. And that is the clarification. I'll do a quick screen share. And that is the language clarification of changing or to mayor and an appointed city council member. I'm counting as a subset of JR one. Is that a correct understanding?
Yes, and, and I, I didn't realize that didn't. Yes, and, and I, I didn't realize that didn't have a little bubble.
Me either.
But I, I actually, in a few minutes before the meeting, I actually copied it over. And I can also put that into the chat and just read it, so we're super clear, because I did do that one. Let me see. So, that's a lot of chat.
My other clarification point, Counselor Penomarif, are you doing that? Is it a procedure question, since I am unaware of this? And so Kristin either rely on you, or Mayor with your experience. So this will require an ordinance to make the code change? So if the council approves the motion tonight, what staff will do is then draft an ordinance that we will bring before council, or in my, is there a different process that we should follow with staff?
I'd have to take a quick look at the charter. I think it requires, an ordinance change requires two hearings, I believe. And so, yeah, whatever, whatever the, I, I would say, it's, whatever the charter says.
This would be the first reading, and then there's a second reading.
Right. Thank you, Kristin, that's much more clear. Counselor Penomarif?
Would you like me just to read through, so it'll be on the recording as well?
No, I think, is, is it in the chat now?
Yeah, it's in the chat.
Okay.
If I, if I did it right.
We have a motion and a second to approve the amendments to TMC two point two zero JR one, J, as identified as JR one, JR two, and JR four. Was that the motion incomplete, or was the rest of the stuff in there?
That was the motion, but as, as Jordan pointed out, there was another clarification, an and and an or. And so this would be, if I did it right, this would be the reading, the new reading of those two paragraphs.
I'm gonna go ahead and read those into the record, they are not part of the motion. Two point two zero point zero three zero, membership compensation. The planning commission shall consist of seven members to be appointed by the mayor with the consent of the city council. No more than one member may live outside the city, is that the old language?
No, that's the new language.
Okay, no more than one member may live outside the city limits of Talon. Commission members shall receive no compensation, the mayor, or, and that's the old language.
Whoops, that's when I screwed up.
Yeah.
The, it should be the mayor and, and appointed, is that right?
Okay, let me ask the city recorder, do you have, do you have what we are talking about? Do you have the amendments, correct?
I'm sorry, Mayor, can you repeat that?
I was asking Hector, if you, if, I just wanna make sure you're tracking this, but you have the recording as well. I, I, I think it's getting a little convoluted, and I just wanna make sure that we're not making it hard.
Mayor, I'll refer to the recordings when, during the minutes.
All right, so the motion is to approve amendments to TMC two point two zero JR one, JR two, and JR four, as indicated in the, in the packet of May eighteenth. Is there any further discussion? I just have one point, and that is to say that the mayor doesn't appoint anybody without consent of the council. The, the charter makes it really clear that I can't unilaterally act, or the mayor's office can't unilaterally act. It takes seven people to make an appointment, and/or a quorum, and the mayor is a more accurate way to put it. So that's, I think, a germane point to this conversation. Any other deliberation? Roll call, please.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Penomarif?
Yes.
Counselor Greater?
Yes.
Counselor Buyers?
Yes.
Counselor Parry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. The next item on the agenda is item eight point one, which is approval of the city council, it's the consent agenda, excuse me. Item eight has eight point one, approval of the city council minutes of May fourth, and eight point two is letter of support for Bear Creek River Mile nineteen point zero. And we have some comments on that letter, so we'll go ahead and, I'm gonna go ahead and ask that we pull that letter out. So, and add it as item ten point one, and then we'll, we'll continue the order from there. So, has everybody had a chance to read the minutes? Is there any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Perry Miller?
I move to approve the consent agenda calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar, is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counsel, excuse me, Counsel Penomarif?
Yes.
Counselor Greater?
Yes.
Counselor Buyers?
Yes.
Counselor Parry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector, item point nine is unfinished business, there's none. Item ten is new business, ten point one is the letter of support for Bear Creek. There's just, or, I didn't write this letter, and the council will have an opportunity to take a look at it for support. There's one change I would suggest to it, and it was based on a conversation I had earlier with one of the council members, and that is to strike the language about illegal camping. So if, if, and I wanna thank Counsel Perry Miller for, for pointing that out for me. I missed it in my first read, and it is something that I would, I would be hesitant to sign with that language in it. So I don't know, since it's on the consent calendar, I don't know, and it was not written by our office. I don't know if it's, if we are, if we're able to change the language, like if this is the same letter that everybody is signing, maybe you could tell me a little bit about that, Jordan?
Yeah, this letter was sent to us as a draft letter from the Rogue Council of Watersheds, who is the one applying for this grant, and they said we are welcome to edit the letter as needed. The one ask is that we get them a signed letter by Friday, since when they are required to submit their support letters.
Well, I took another read of it before the meeting, after, after the discussion, and there's nothing there I really object to. But I do have another question, once we get the letter thing straightened out about this project. So, does anybody else feel differently about removing that piece of language? And, and then just giving consent to sign, to have the mayor sign it? Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I'm fine with removing that language, I think that's a good idea. I gave a call to the Ethics Commission this morning just to check with them, and upon their recommendation, I am going to, out of, out of an abundance of caution, declare a potential conflict of interest, just because this, the, the work being done with this grant overlaps with the scope that I've worked, that I do professionally, and have not been engaged in this in a professional capacity in any way. But, but upon their recommendation, out of an abundance of caution, would just say that there's a potential conflict of interest there.
Okay, very good, thank you for declaring that, and you still be voting? Very good.
Yes, indeed.
Okay, so is there any further discussion on the letter? Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I just wanna say this is really, really very exciting project for our community, and I think the city's support to this grant application is gonna mean a lot, because, because it's important to do the work and then tell the story of it. And I think the city is gonna be in a position to really help our community understand the value of ecological restoration and what this provides for our community. Very excited about it, hope it comes through.
Okay. There's no other comments, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Penomarif?
I move to approve the letter as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the letter of support to Bear Creek River Mile nineteen point zero, post-fire restoration proposal, striking the language about illegal camping. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Penomarif?
Yes.
Counselor Greater?
Yes.
Counselor Buyers?
Yes.
Counselor Parry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, and this is a question for Counselor Clark, and I may have my projects mixed up, but I, I recall hearing or reading or something that some berms are gonna be removed as part of this project on the Bear Creek, which I support, except that I recall, these are just south of the Mountain View Estates, correct? Wouldn't that be just south of the Mountain View Estates, right? I don't know how far, how far south, because my, my distance ratio.
So the, the north, yeah, the north end of the project borders Lynn Newbury Park.
Okay, all right, so I recall when we were working on the illegal asphalt plant operation, that there were some berms that were in the creek that had been grandfathered in for, that helped displace water flow away from Mountain View Estates. And, and so I would just ask and hope that we would reach out to Mountain View Estates and, and give them a heads up that this project is about to happen, and just make sure that at least they're, I, I know there's a notification process and all that, but that, that they're at least know, you know, that they have an opportunity to consider whether or not that's gonna impact the, the property, because it, it had something to do with flooding issues, and I, and, you know, and it may absolutely be nothing, but I remember when I was first reading or hearing about that, that I, I, I had a memory that made me feel concerned. So that's a big, huge neighborhood down there, and I think changing the water flow would impact the way it is down there.
Yeah, can I just, can I comment on that?
Yeah, please.
Sure, yeah, I think, I think reaching out to them is, is a great idea. The project is, as designed, would, would reduce flooding risk to Mountain View and to other communities downstream, and that's part of the intention behind it.
I'm just going off some old memory, and it's definitely fallible, so. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is now ten point two, and it's the discussion of the OHCS, CDBGDR Action Plan for the Economic Development Appropriations. And you guys, I left my notes on this on my table, it'll take me one second to grab them, this is, so, so sorry. The pluses and minuses of doing this remotely. If we had, we've been in City Hall, I would have, or Town Hall, I would have not been able to do that. So I asked to have this put on the item, the item on the agenda, I wanna make this really quick so that we don't go late here. But as you know, we're having the, we're having another hearing tomorrow night at the community hall to take feedback on those CDBG, that's now called reorgan, so they're reorg, the, the funds, the program is called reorgan, the proposed plan, and that's the four hundred and twenty-two million dollars that, that's being provided by HUD into the state, and that they're taking comments on. And as you know, when Alex came around, and along the way, I've asked for there to be something more intentional in use of those funds, then we'll use it on housing, and if there's any leftover, we'll use some on economic development. My asks have been specifically, could we actually carve some out? And to that end, I have had a meeting with So Ready early on, and, and it just happened to come up. It was a different context, but it happened to come up. And, and then as a result, So Ready developed an ask that I didn't necessarily support, but I supported the idea of having, being more intentional about carving off some of those funds to help businesses recover in our community. And so in her, in So Ready's ask, they asked for five percent, and, and I didn't, I, I was asked to support it. I, I chose not to, because they didn't support the way they would be used. But when they had a meeting and, about it, they, OHCS said that it was not likely that the funds would be allocated in such a way for the purpose of going to So Ready to be distributed. So, so Commissioner Daughter called me the other day, asking for a conversation about this, and I sat down with Commissioner Daughter and Al Mielhofer, Counselor Mielhofer from Phoenix, and Colleen from So Ready. And we do collectively believe that some of those funds should be intentionally set aside in a percentage. And I didn't object to the five percent, I thought that was a reasonable ask. And remember that that's four hundred and twenty-two million dollars, it's gonna drop down into the state, it'll be divided up amongst the counties that are, that have been impacted, and we were working off of numbers that we believe Jackson County will probably get something like fifty-seven percent if it's allocated proportional. And so that would put the ask somewhere around twelve million dollars for our region. And one of the things that I set out to do was to find out what the rules were for economic development, and how economic development funds can be used in accordance to HUD rules, because that's how, that's the, those are the side rails that are. And so there are some uses, and actually, they include things like creating sidewalks, ramps, and ADA accessibility retrofits, safety lighting, wayfinding signs for pedestrians and bikers, connections to regional thoroughways, such as the Bear Creek Greenway, and then also a revolving loan fund, where some of the ways that So Ready had come up with, but in a discussion with Alex, there's also some additional ways that these funds can be used to help the economic, not only help in the recovery from our community, but also help some of the businesses sustain some of the financial impacts that they've had. So I still remain supportive, but here's my point. I, the group of us who met, thought that we would make a collaborative ask for the five percent, but I, I said that I would not make that ask without discussing it with the council first, because obviously if we ask for economic funds, those, those reductions would come from any housing funds, and so currently there isn't a economic revitalization carve-out. There is some in planning, which can be used for that stuff, but it's not intentionally for economic development. So anyway, without getting into a long, or creating a big, long report, this all happened this week, and, and I don't have really detail, but I would not want to join that ask with the other officials if, if the council didn't support, support, you know, the, the, the need or the intention of carving out some of those funds for economic development. And the last thing I wanna say is that one thing we did agree on is that there are some really broad uses, of course, like any CDBG grant, we would, we would have to apply for them based on our community needs, if they were available and allowed. And, and so in many ways, that allows Talon to apply for them in, in our own unique way, based on our particular needs, so. That's it, so what I'm asking is consent from the council to join Counselor Mielhofer and Colleen Padilla from So Ready, and Commissioner Daughter in asking for five percent of the funds to be allocated for economic revitalization. Any questions? Sorry, I didn't have a better report, but like I said, it all happened this week. And there's plenty of, oh, by the way, there's plenty of time for us to iron out the types of details. And if, if there's not enough detail here for the council to make a decision, I I certainly understand that. Councilor Penamriff?
Thank you. So I mean, a lot of the things that you described, I think are very cool. And well, let me just ask my question. So if five percent of this money were available, would it then be like partitioned out to the cities and the county in, with some sort of distribution based on you know, impact from the fire? And if So Ready's part of that, how would they be part of that? Is, that's, that's kind of my concern. I, I like the idea of, I know that, that our city would put the money to good use that would be supportive of our goals in terms of housing. I, we have a very strong equity focus. I don't know that that's universal in this valley. So I guess that's what I'm concerned about is how the money or to whom the money would be distributed.
Well, as much as I know is that one of the HUD requirements for these funds, no matter how they're used within, you know, within the buckets that they, that there's eligible uses, it all has to be allocated towards fire impacted, low to moderate income. So those are the two parameters that I think make a difference for our community. For all of the communities. And, and I heard that in the discussion with Daughter and Mielhofer and Colleen, that, that everybody's really clear that that would, that's what they'd be used for, but but how it would work, as I understand it, is that, you know, they, they allocate the funding, they say, here's what you can use it for, and then each community applies for whatever their programs allow. And I did say in the meeting that I, the reason I had not signed on to the previous ask was So Ready, when requested, was because I didn't agree that those funds should go directly to So Ready and be allocated from So Ready. So I still hold that and as the case. And so what we did agree on is that it would just be an ask for five percent for economic revitalization and that the rules would be provided for, and then we would be able to apply for them in accordance with what our community needs are. Does that answer your question? Yeah. And again, I understand this is pretty vague. And if it's not enough information, believe me, I understand. Councilor Greider?
And the five percent is from the total or from the, say, estimated fifty-seven percent, like the, the piece that's coming to our area, the five percent would, are we, is it specifically five percent that just we're asking for or that statewide everyone would have a five percent?
Yeah, I mean, Commissioner Daughter is here and I welcome him to, to see if he aligns with my understanding, but what we are asking for is five percent of the funds to be carved off for economic revitalization. So that would be made available in the same way that all of the funds would be made available. Whatever that's going to be, you know, based on impact, based on population numbers, I, I don't know for sure, but it would be allocated in the same way. So it'd be five percent of the four hundred and twenty-two million dollars.
That other areas could also request to use in that way. Okay.
And, and to be honest, and I think this is an important part of the consideration, it would be used in accordance with their priorities as long as it's within the HUD rules. Yeah. I am going to ask Councilor Daughter if he wants to add to it. You can just raise your hand. If not, I'll carry on. Thank you, Miss, thank you, Commissioner. Okay, so like I said, I'm just looking for consensus to, to join that ask. But I'm also, you know, I can't express enough that I realize that this is pretty vague and it's just that it just happened and I can't really add a lot of detail, except for that there's a lot of allowed uses that would check off a lot of boxes, including age friendly and economic revitalization. And it would all go to fire impacted and low to moderate income. And by the way, the prioritization is low income first, moderate income later, two tranches. Councilor Clark?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know Commissioner Daughter did raise his hand.
Yeah. I, one exciting thing I did find out is that those funds could be used to help people restore their home businesses, which, which I was really pleased to see that, especially when you talk about the low income piece of it. Commissioner, do you want to come forward and speak on this? Hector, can you bring him into the room? He's me, he, okay, there you go. Commissioner, you have the floor.
Okay, well, no, I, I, thank you. I, Mayor, I, I just wanted to say that yes, you, you described that very, very well. And the point was that what we're looking to do is we want to put down a marker that says that this needs to be, this needs to be included as an important part of the community recovery from these wildfires. And it needs to be more substantive than just in the housing arena. And we want to have this more flexibility, details to follow later, but the principle would be that each of the communities would have the ability to put in for this money in accordance with what they believe their needs are.
All right, Councilor Penamriff?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, we're still talking about the five percent, right, Commissioner?
Commissioner Daughter, that's a question for you.
Yeah, yeah. I, I'm unmuted. I see. I just had to make sure that you could hear me. Okay. Yes, that's still in, with, with a five percent. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, I would ask for consensus if there's no other questions by raising the question, does anybody object? All right, so I'm going to send Colleen a message that this council doesn't object to the city signing on to that. And I'll, and I'll ask for a review before, before it gets sent in that it meets the intention. Okay. And, and then she's going to go before the hearing and make the ask, as I understand it, either her or Commissioner Daughter, I'm not sure who. They'll include our city as wanting to have that. Right? Does everybody still an opportunity to object before I close on, close and go to the next one? All right. Thank you, everybody. And I'm sorry I rambled on. I, like I said, I just didn't have time to write a report on it. But there's no decisions until the final decision anyway. So all right, the next item, if I can find my agenda, here it is, is item ten point three, or no, yeah, ten point three now. Approval of the IGA for Highway ninety-nine at Bear Creek Greenway Corridor Revisioning Project Staff Report.
Yeah, so we've been talking about the Transportation Growth Management Project. It's been going on for, it's been in the works for a while now. But the best person to share about this is actually Laura Buell, which is the project manager for this grant from DLCD. And so I'll let her give you all the details. And my question, Laura, is would you like me to drive the PowerPoint or would you like to do it on your end?
Let me try to do it on my end. Thank you and good evening, Council. Oh, I need to have screen sharing enabled.
I have, I keep going offline, you guys, because I have allergies are bothering me. So please, it's nothing more than that. No one needs to watch me dab my eyes or anything.
Okay, so can you see the full slide?
Yeah, Laura, we actually see your notes section.
Oh, you do? Okay.
But it works great, too.
All right. Well, yeah, I do have some notes. So you'll see those. That's fine, though. As long as you can see everything. So let me just start off by giving you some background on the program. And I'll introduce myself first. I'm Laura Buell. I'm the Code Assistance Planner with the Transportation and Growth Management Program. So I work on projects that help communities improve their development codes. And the program, we call it TGM, is a joint program between DLCD and ODA, and its purpose is to link land use and transportation planning to create livable places where people can walk, bike, take transit or drive where they want to go. So we really focus on walking and biking and transit when it's available because cities are already pretty well-developed for cars. And, and so that, that part has been taken care of already. And our purpose is really to expand transportation choices. I do want to point out that TGM is not a disaster recovery program, and we could have done this project whether the fire had happened or not. But it, it could be that you might see your results sooner than other communities that are fully developed. So the title of this is the Highway ninety-nine and Bear Creek Greenway Corridor Revisioning, which unfortunately shares a lot of similarity with Jackson County's project title, which is the Bear Creek Greenway Revisioning Plan. And that plan is focused on management of the greenway. And so we'll be making a big effort throughout the project to distinguish between those, those two projects. The project area is not what's here in red. That's the burn scar. The project area is all the land that's along Highway ninety-nine and the Bear Creek Greenway between Medford and Ashland. And it includes properties on both sides of the highway and the land in between the highway and the greenway. And it also includes land outside that corridor to the extent that it can connect to the, the greenway, that, that will be an important part of the process. Or sorry, the project. And we'll be refining the project area throughout. As you know, the project involves three jurisdictions, the city of Talent, city of Phoenix and Jackson County. And it includes planning for the public realm as well as code amendments, which will apply to your zoned land. This is a two-phased project, and I'll get more into detail about the two phases after I cover the project objective. And I know this is a lot of text, but I think it's worth just reading because this is the core of what the project goal is. So the intended outcome of the process is to create a plan and development code language for redeveloping the land adjacent to the transportation corridor, and that's Highway ninety-nine and the Bear Creek Greenway in a manner that supports multimodal transportation with a particular emphasis on walking and biking and multi-use hubs or nodes that improve destination accessibility and reduce the need for motor vehicle traffic. So destination accessibility refers to either being able to travel to destinations or, and this is the goal of mixed use, already being close to your destination. So you really don't have to travel. So phase one is the visioning and strategic planning portion. It will involve identifying projects that enhance opportunities for people to walk, bike and use transit, recognize the opportunities and challenges of the post-fire landscape, evaluate increased housing opportunities and types through mixed-use commercial and residential nodes along Highway ninety-nine. And that gets back to what I mentioned before about destination accessibility. And then have place making in Talent and Phoenix, which would include some green infrastructure such as trees, bioswales, things of that nature to mitigate flooding and improve multimodal transportation. And since you can see my notes, I can call this out, place making in case you wanted a definition, is a process for transforming public spaces to strengthen the connections between people and those places. So there are places for people to gather. They might involve public art, places for people to rest. And in order for something to be considered good place making, it should be welcoming, comfortable and pleasant. So then phase two is the implementation. And it will include recommendations to implement the goals and vision from the phase one visioning and strategic planning process, recommendations to increase safety, visibility and connectedness to the Bear Creek Greenway. And this you will definitely be seeing come before you, comprehensive plan and development code amendments for increasing housing and mixed-use options in the project area. And the main deliverables consist of a design concept, final report, comprehensive plan language and the zoning code amendments. The public involvement aspects involve the goal of having a collaborate level of public participation. And that's one of the higher levels of, of public participation, according to the International Association of Public Participation. So we're really making a strong effort to have robust public involvement. There will be a project website, which will include project information, documents and sign up for email notifications. There will be a public involvement plan as one of the early tasks in the project, and that will refine and further define exactly how the public involvement will occur. The major public involvement event in phase one is a place making workshop. This project was scoped out during the height of the pandemic, so we don't have any in-person public events. We hope, however, in phase two that we will. But this place making workshop is, is designed in a way to allow maximum participation from people with computers, without computers. And so we, we hope that the fact that it's not in person won't be a barrier for anybody. The public can certainly comment on major deliverables. And then phase two, public involvement is yet to be decided exactly how that will work. City responsibilities. First, and this is a requirement of all TGM projects, that you support the mission goals and objectives of TGM. There will need to be staff time for the project management team and other meetings, as well as staff time for review, comment and editing of, of deliverables. So we, we absolutely do expect the staff to be very actively involved in the project. The city, and when I say city, it will be your staff, is expected to have, make the meeting arrangements. So venue scheduling, printing, advertising, if that's applicable. Staff reports and any required public notices. So there could be some cost incurred with public notices, just as anytime you send out a public notice for zoning ordinance amendments. That, that's no, no different from, from those regular public notices. And then also public outreach. We do rely to a great degree on the city for, for a lot of the public outreach. So press releases, ads, posting and different kinds of media, writing articles for the paper or newsletters, radio interviews, presentations, speeches, any other publicity. There's a wide range of, of things that the city could do to, to help get the word out. So those were general project requirements. And then I do list some of the specific project tasks. In a, these are in addition to the PMT meetings, that's the project management team, and in addition to work, and it, and it is a lot of work that goes into reviewing project deliverables. So assisting the, with creating the rosters for the project advisory committee, committee and the citizen advisory committee and the stakeholders, compiling background information for the consultants, organizing and leading the project area tour, which is the one in-person event that we're going to have at the beginning of the project, putting bilingual links on, from the city website to the project website, providing computer access for the place making workshops. And then at the end of phase And then at the end of Phase One, holding local jurisdiction meetings. The schedule, so the contract has been signed actually quite probably more than a month ago now. The IGAs have been sent to the local jurisdictions for signature. So that's what's before you today. And we will start the project as soon as all the IGAs are signed. So I I expect that to occur no later than than June. And Phase One is expected to end in April 2023. And what we we hope that the contract and IGA will be then amended. So Phase Two can get going pretty immediately after that. So yeah, May or June in 2023 is when we would expect to start Phase Two. And that is the end. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, when this was being talked about, I don't recall if you said just now, our community participation, especially historically marginalized folks, was really emphasized. Will there be stipends for community members to participate?
We are working on that. We've run down a number of dead ends, unfortunately, but I'm working on a very promising option right now that I don't want to announce it until it's approved. But we do expect that that will be an aspect for the CAC. Not the PAC will be people who are probably being involved because as part of their job. But the CAC would be regular folks. And so we we have been working diligently to get that in place for that committee.
Counselor Panamara.
Yeah, follow up. So CAC stands for Citizen Advisory Committee?
Right, so civilians, non-governmental people.
Okay, so there is, there's no citizen requirement.
No, this is the broad, I mean, citizen has many meeting meanings. So this is citizen as in not part of the government.
I have a question about that. Oh, go ahead, Jordan.
I have a question, but not off of that vein.
Oh, really quickly on that vein. So what's the selection process for the CAC?
That will be done collaboratively in the project management team. So the the three local jurisdictions and the agency, that that's me. And and the consultant will meet to to decide that. And there is, hmm, my screen seems to have blacked out. Let me see if I can, okay. There is a description in the IGA. If, and I know your packet is well over 100 pages, so I don't. But in task, where is it? Yes, Task 1.2 in the IGA, and that's on page 15 of the IGA, which I I do understand that that's not your page 15. It lists the rosters. And it describes the how, what those committees would look like. And so what it says for the CAC is that it must consist of people who live in the project area or people who were displaced from the project area as a result of the Almeida fire and would like to return. To the extent feasible, the demographic composition, including age, gender, location of residence, race and ethnicity, educational attainment, experience of a disability, and renter slash homeownership status of the CAC must reflect the population of the project area prior to the Almeida fire and further the objectives of the general requirements for public involvement stated above. And so there's a whole section on that that gets into equity and a number of different aspects. So that's, that's what it says about the composition. So the composition of the committee needs to meet those parameters.
And and I understand you said that it's going to be coming from all of the impacted area, right? Everything from North Ashland to North Phoenix, right? Or South Medford?
No, no, oh, right. So it's between, it doesn't include the city of city limits of Ashland or Medford. So it's basically from, well, and Jackson County.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, that's right, that's right.
Yeah.
All right, yeah. Right, because the southernmost part of the destruction and the northernmost part of the destruction happened in the county. Yeah, sorry, I got my.
Yeah, that's okay. And that's why we have three jurisdictions working together to to form the committee.
That's great, that's great.
Yeah.
Okay, and I love, you know, I loved how you just described it. So that's exciting.
Okay.
Yeah, Laura, this came, this question came up throughout this past week. I know that the outcome of Phase Two is really to make some recommendations for code amendments to help realize the vision that comes out of Phase One. Is that a misunderstanding?
So Phase One will recommend code amendments. Phase Two, the goal is to have those at the end. We will be happy if the whole package is approved by all the councils and commissions. It's not, so at the end of Phase Two is not intended to be a recommendation. It's intended to be actual implementation.
Great, but Phase One will show the recommendations that councils will then choose to adopt.
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
And then, yeah, Phase Two is the amendments themselves.
Jordan, that was one of my questions as well, and I just want to make sure that I clearly understood. So at the end of Phase One, those recommendations are going to come to the individual councils for adoption. Is that right?
No, no, because there's nothing to adopt at the end of Phase One. At the end of Phase One, I don't, if you remember on the city task slide, there's an item that says local jurisdiction meetings. So we have, we will have a series of meetings with the various local jurisdictions. So with you, with the city council of Phoenix, with the Board of Commissioners of Jackson County. And there are several meetings slated. Actually, there's enough to have multiple meetings if needed. And that is to confirm the direction of the project. So to confirm, yes, we're satisfied with where we are now. And yes, we like the direction and we want to move forward. That's the purpose of those meetings. It's not a decision-making process. It's it's, they're not decision meetings in the sense that you are making a decision about your own documents, but it is a decision about whether or not to continue with the project, basically.
So my question is, is there a decision point? And if so, where is it?
To continue with the project?
No, to, I mean, to, so you're asking, I heard you say that there was going to be implementation steps. And I and I did look for this, I did read this, and I didn't see it. That's why I was.
That's in Phase Two.
Yeah, there is, it's, there is a decision point in Phase Two. Okay.
Yes.
That's literally what I'm asking.
Yeah, we always include adoption, because if we don't, then sometimes things linger on and never get adopted.
Any other questions? Counselor Panamara.
So at the end of Phase One, the recommendations are presented, and then and then a decision is made to continue on. And Phase Two are like the code amendments, comprehensive plan amendments, and all that, just a bunch of plans, really, nothing.
Details, yeah.
Details of the plans, which then may turn into projects, looking for funding. But that's, that's all out of scope.
Yes, the the place making part, that will probably be mostly things that the city will have to get done itself. But the code amendments will almost certainly be done, will, the the effect of those will be carried out by developers when they, so if new standards or new uses are approved, then when people develop their land, you'll see the results.
Right, so, so after Phase One and the recommendations are presented, it's each each city, each jurisdiction decides whether they want to, what they want to move forward on.
Yeah, I mean, we hope that everybody will decide to move forward, obviously. But that, those meetings were put in there just in case.
But if if you have, if you're going to move forward to say amendments to Talent's code or or something, some place making ideas within the city of Talent, and I hope this doesn't happen, but if Phoenix says, no, we're not doing this, that doesn't matter as far as Talent's concerned, right?
Yeah, they can be split out, yeah. Yeah, and 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 at the very end, the final package of of final deliverables, and this is at the end of Phase Two, it will actually be three different packages, one for Talent, one for Phoenix, and one for the county.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, they're, you know, they're, they're tied to the land, right?
Right.
So naturally.
Anybody else? Pretty exciting stuff. Counselor Panamara.
Yeah, I just wanted to, just to hear from Jordan a little bit about, this looks like a lot of staff time. I know there's a very, there's a consultant. There was a, you know, a competitive process. A consultant has a really nice website, looks really great. But it sounds like a lot of work for city staff to do that. So the question is, is how will that affect us? And also is, does the grant compensate the time of of city staff to to do these tasks?
No, oh, do you want to go first, Jordan, or? Okay, okay. So 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 these projects don't have a designated match. Some TGM projects do, and so staff has to spend time recording their hours and submitting them and saying, this is our match. Code assistance projects don't have a match, but we do expect the participation. So so no, there's no, there's no compensation for that. That's considered the city's contribution to to the project. And the time varies quite a bit. So the time needed, so there could be, you know, weeks where not really much needs to be done. And then a big deliverable comes in and you have to spend, you know, a certain number of hours reviewing it or getting ready for meetings. So it can vary quite a bit. But that's, it's considered quote unquote, think of it with quotes around it, the the city's match, even though we don't tally it up.
And Counselor Panamara, I'm happy to share the staff point of view. You know, this is a lot of work for this project, but it aligns so closely with city goals and particularly aligns so closely with the rebuild of that Highway 99 corridor that we look forward to to having this opportunity to to move our goals forward.
Thank you both for that.
Can I ask one more question? So if the city has any capacity issues around this project, is there funding available to help with that?
Oh, is, is that?
Yeah.
Is that for me? No, not, no. But we have a lot of experience with cities that have capacity issues. And we step in to the extent that we are able to to help with that. And so I, I mean, I, I've worked with cities that have literally lost all their staff. Like, they have nobody. They, the mayor's, you know, in the office paying utility bills or, you know, sending out the utility bills. So that's an extreme example, but this is, we mostly work with small cities. And so we will you will work to 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 meet your needs and your timeline.
Okay, I mean, I'm sure that, Jordan, you know, that's really between you and Jordan, but I was just wondering if there was, if there was some kind of carve out for that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, I mean, I I pitch in a lot. And when it's clear that the city needs some help, I pitch in. But there are some things that we, I can't replace a a city perspective. And so there's some things that we simply need the city to weigh in on, and nobody else can do that except for the city.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you so much, Laura.
Sure.
All right, seeing none. Well, great, thank you for coming tonight and giving us this great presentation and waiting until, you know, just about nine o'clock to do it. So we really appreciate your time.
Well, thank you very much.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is, shall I move on, Jordan, or do you have another comment?
I will require a motion from council to approve signing of the IGA and giving me execution power.
Right.
And I have a potential motion in the chat, just in case council decides to move forward.
Good, Counselor Clark?
Yes. I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement for code assistance, Highway 99, and Bear Creek Greenway Corridor Revisioning and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Again.
We have a motion and a second to approve the intergovernment agreement for code assistance, Highway 99, and Bear Creek Greenway Corridor Revisioning and authorize the city manager execute the agreement. Is there any further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Panamara.
Yes.
Counselor Greider.
Yes.
Counselor Byers.
Yes.
Counselor Perry Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Thank you again, Laura. The next item on the agenda is now 10.4, and it's the approval of the IGA for a coordinated water rights management and water sharing plan. Staff report.
Yes, so we have begun talking about this topic for the past about five months or so. And I'd love to give a, I'll try to keep it quick presentation, just to remind folks about the background and what we're really talking about with this IGA and how it came to being. So this is a water rights topic, and it's a water right coordination strategy and water sharing agreement that we've had now two say sessions on, one to learn about water rights and two to learn about this agreement. So this presentation I get, will give, will be a reminder overview of that. At the end, I will ask council to make a decision on if we'd like to move forward with this IGA. I also wanted to ask Hector to go ahead and promote Adam Sussman, who's in the audience of us today. He is the consultant that's been working on this project and can answer technical questions that I am unable to. So thank you, Adam, for being here tonight. And, you know, I'm gonna move probably roughly quickly to keep us within time tonight. Please go ahead and shout out or raise your hand if you want me to slow down a particular slide to dive into deeper details and provide more clarification. Okay, with that, I will share a screen. It's shown for you all. Okay. Oh, I'm doing the same. You see in my notes line? Okay, you guys seeing a PowerPoint now?
I see your notes, I think.
Okay, well, we're, we're.
It's a Zoom bug.
We're gonna go the old fashioned way here, and I'm just gonna show you the the creator side here. Okay. Here we go, is that visible? All right, perfect. A little thing here. So I am praying to you all on the coordinated water rights management and water sharing agreement. You know, in most of our conversations and previous discussions, we have been talking about this as a water sharing strategy, IGA. All one and the same. To kind of set the stage of how we've arrived to this point of bringing this IGA in in front of you all today. So in 1922, So in nineteen twenty-two, Metro Water Commission was formed. Um, and that Metro Water Commission provided water to the Medford community. In the thirties and the sixties, you know, three cities jumped on board. And the Metro Water Commission supplied water to those cities as well, and using the water rights that Medford Water Commission had obtained. It was around the nineteen seventies that the Metro Water Commission really realized that they didn't have enough surplus water to give to Eagle Point, Central Point, and Jacksonville. Looking at the long term fifty year horizon. And so when Phoenix, Talon, and Ashland approached Metro Water Commission. You know, they required us to obtain our own seasonal rights. And we entered what was called a treat and transport water supply agreements, meaning they just treated the water we owned and transferred the water we owned. We owned the rights to that water. Um, at that same time period, Medford Water Commission required Eagle Point, Central Point, and Jacksonville to also obtain their own water rights under that same agreement. Um, so at the present, all cities have their own water rights for the May through September season. Um, and Metro Water Commission treats and transports the water during the summer for all of our jurisdictions. Um, so at the Duff Water Treatment Plant, which is the main water treatment plant for Medford, we have um six different cities. Um, with over twenty collective water rights. So, you know, this has been a long time in the making, and and we're now looking at some potential issues around certifying those water rights. Before we get into that, I wanna do a quick water rights one-on-one. Um, just to make sure everyone knows the terms they use throughout the presentation today, et cetera. Um, so the way it works is that um a jurisdiction applies for water water rate. And it specifies where are we gonna take the water from, how much type of water point of use. When we obtain a water right, we have it as a permit. And we have to show benef- beneficial use of that water to move from a permit to a certified water rate. Um, the benefit of a certified water right is it's yours. You don't ever have to go back to the Department of. Water Resources, um, and it's, there's very lower likely that the state could come in and and make changes to that. Certified water rate versus a permit, but I'm gonna caveat that and say Adam can correct me when I'm saying that one wrong. Just speeding through here, here is what talent has um in terms of water rights. We have five hundred thirty-three acre feet that have been certificateed, where we we have that certificate. We don't have to go back to the Department of Water Resources. And we have seven hundred and fifty-nine acre feet that are permitted, so we need to show beneficial use to certify that. You know, talent's projected twenty seventy demand. This is from our water master plan and is pretty close to the numbers from some other plans that we've had. Is that by twenty seventy, we expect to be using over a thousand acre feet, thousand eighty-one. So just to give you all a sense of. Of timing and and our own water rights. So like I said, there are twenty different water rights held by both the Metro Water Commission and the six partner cities. Some all collectively, that represents a hundred and sixty-nine point seven cubic feet per second. That's the flow of water. Um, that all of our water rights add up to. So partly issue around certification is you can't certify larger than your ability to treat the water. So this bottleneck is occurring because the Duff Water Treatment Plant can only certify seventy cubic feet per second. Or sorry, can only treat seventy cubic feet per second, but we have more than that in terms of water rate potential for certification. There's also a water supply imbalance among partners, um, and a strong need for coordination of just water use in this valley. To better describe what I was saying there with the flow rate, so this graph, what you're looking at here, up here in the dash line. This is if we, all of our water rights in the valley combined. The blue line shows the maximum, um, I wanna say maximum daily dose, but pretty much the maximum water usage. That we can expect with a high projection, a medium projection, a low projection, and this is the average daily water usage here in red. And what this graph is really showing is all of our water rights are enough to meet our region's watering needs into the future, per best guesses. Um, so there's really no need for cities to go out and get their own water rights and just add to this bottleneck issue. So the first objective that inspired this IGA was the need for certification strategy for water rights. So as I mentioned before, the Duff Water treatment plant only has a processing capacity seventy CFS. Um, but if we were all to certificate our water rights at the Duff Water Treatment Plant at current rate, it wouldn't be possible if we exceed that seventy. If we go and sort of certificate seventy, there's a chance the state could step in and say. Uh, we're gonna link those together, because there's no way that you could physically get this, pull this water out. Um, but the water treatment plant, Metro Water Committee, had a plan to withstand the capacity. And so we can, so the certification strategy parallels that um expansion, so that everyone can get their water right certified. The second objective for this IGA is to develop a framework for partner cities to share water. Um, we're facing the point where where some cities may look to get more water rights, because they've reached the limit of their own water rate. But if they went out to get more water rights, that would add to this bottleneck issue in terms of treatment capacity. So what you're seeing here is the the authorized volumes of the water rights of each of the six jurisdictions that take water from Medford Water Commission. And how much we typically, or how much we use in twenty twenty. So you can see where there is some imbalance in water rights versus water usage. Um, before any of these jurisdictions entered into the process for this IGA. Um, I think this is something that came in front of you all with Sandy about two years ago, I believe. Um, everyone agreed to the guiding principles that everyone needed to retain their own water rights. Um, anyone could withdraw from this agreement at any point. Um, and that Medford Water would play the role of a managing agency, but wouldn't be a fiduciary or have money in the game themselves. So this is the result of two years of monthly meetings between the partner cities. So this is the certification strategy. So what this shows you is what is already certificateed, which is that almost seventy CFS. And the order in which folks have laid out for when people get to certificate their rights um down the line. And here in yellow is talent, sorry, it's a very small font, I know. Um. One thing that I appreciate in this is that Metro Water Commission has prioritized the cities to certificate their water first, um, and they would follow the cities thereafter. Um, recently, we learned talent is a little bit of an exception. Our water right does not technically have this weight tied to it, a CFS. Our water right is volume only. Um, so if we were to certify, it would not impact that bottleneck issue at the treatment plant. Um, which is, you know, great news and takes some pressure off. Um, but what this IGA does do is it helps us show beneficial use for our water to be able to certificate if other cities. Are using our excess or unused water rate. And that brought us to the objective number two, the water sharing. Um, you know, the important thing, the refreshing is that city retains ownership of water rights regardless of use. Now, I did go out to a third party attorney that specializes in water rights, and I sent to you all the letter. That she wrote after reviewing the IGA, so that you all knew what her interpretation was. Um, and she she agreed that the the state will retain ownership of their water rights, um, regardless of how the water is used. No, it works, the city will share their excess water. The cost of that water will be the O and M costs. Um, Medford Water Commission will manage and administer the program, um, and the idea is the benefit of this to the folks that have the extra water. Um, is that it shows that beneficial official use for certification. Um, so how did this IGA get developed? It's been a monthly meeting since January twenty twenty-one. Um, it was been an entirely collaborative process with consensus. Um, really, I have to admit that I appreciate this team a lot. I jumped into the game uh my first month in this role, and. They gave me extra time and many hours to make sure I fully understood what was going on. And we've had lots of communication with with you all along the way. And it's currently going to all of the different partners in this for approval of this phase one IGA. Um, in March, here, it went to Metro Water Commission, they say we approved the first draft. Um, every city in green has approved it. Currently, it's before us and before Ashland. Um, as the final folks decide if they'd like to sign on or not. Now, I want to recognize that there are future challenges um that this IGA does not address. Um, the the main one that we're all looking to is the conservation that we need to start doing to control demand. Um, while we have water rights collectively enough for the valley, will we have enough water? Um, is a separate question. And that's something that I know all of the jurisdictions are discussing right now. I think. The collaboration that has come out of creating this IGA has set the table for collaborating for future water topics. Um, you know, we will need to update our water management and conservation plan, which we plan to do this coming year. We're seeing changing weather pa- patterns, which are changing our water flows in our area. Um, and of course, future regulation could always occur. Um, that regulation comes down from the state level, and that could also change how things go. That was my very quick and dirty, I appreciate you all for listening, presentation. Um, so I'd like to turn it all to you folks for any questions or discussion.
I just have one point I wanna make before we get going. Um, so, uh, Jordan, you first. Uh, you started this conversation by saying that you're gonna be looking for a decision and um on the IGA. And I just wanna let everybody know that I I had a phone call with Jordan before the meeting, and I talked about. Um, if the opinion comes in uh in late in the day. Um, I think I called it the eleventh hour, um, that I would be asking for the council to. I can, I always wanna say table, I know it's continue the matter to the uh to the next meeting to give everybody a chance to um to digest. Um, the legal opinion. Um, that said, she asked me to make sure that we have plenty of time to ask questions about that. Um, and I do have some questions about it, uh, for sure, and I um, I'm 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 gonna be asking the council to continue the matter as well, so. Um, I I wanna be transparent about that as we get into this conversation, and um, uh, because I I don't wanna do it after the. Fact to make it look like a afterthought, so um, letting everybody know that. Um, so I saw um. Somebody's hand go up, I think it was Counselor Perry Miller.
Yes, it was me, thank you. Um, Jordan, I may have missed this, but um, there was a section that talked about. The costs associated with Medford Waters' management of the program. Um, and that those costs would also be something that the cities would end up paying. Was there any type of estimate of what that would look like? I didn't see that in the analysis, but I may just have missed it.
Yeah, you know, I did talk to Metro Water Commission about that exact topic, because it flagged for me as well. It's gonna be administrative costs, they're just absorbed in the water rate that we pay, um, Metro Water Commission for their treat and transport. Um, the way this IGA has been set up or this process of washings and checks um set up is it's very minimal administration. Um, and we don't expect increases to our water rates because of it.
Do we expect increases to anything because of it? Any increases at all?
Okay. Um, I do not. We will be required to attend an annual meeting. Um, in which we will review the IGA to make sure it's working and discuss any changes that need to happen. Um, that's the only known staff capacity for this agreement.
Go ahead.
Oh, I had another unrelated question. You can go first, Mayor.
Yeah, this is just an extension of that question, and then I'll get right back to you, Counselor Perry Miller. Um, so conversely. Uh, are any of the um cities with um excess water rights being compensated in any way?
If if an if another, uh, like say Central Point. Uses water off of um the water rights of the other cities, which is the most likely scenario, because they're the only city that's really butting up against their water rate. Um, what would happen is the amount of water they use, so say they use a hundred acre feet. Would be divvied up across the six or the five cities that have the excess water rights. Um, and then we would receive compensation from Central Point for the our portion that they used.
Can I ask what uh what the, so how 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 what will be the proportion that they use? Will it be divvied up evenly over six cities, or will it be um based on the portion of excess water rates each city has?
Yeah, and and Adam will likely jump into this. I'll give it my best go. It's divided up evenly across cities, but only to the amount of excess they have remaining. So for example, Jacksonville, say they only have eight extra acre feet of water rights that they could even share. So if, so they would get only eight acre feet worth of water compensation. And the rest of the cities would get the the remainder divvied up among them, say, twelve acre feet per city. Adam, do you wanna give that a better go? Mayor, if that was not clear, let's have Adam.
No, I think I I've just watching Jordan give this presentation, and I just wanna say how impressed I am with everything that she's absorbed over. The time that she's been here. So, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I think, I think that's it. It's it's proportionally distributed amongst the cities with excess. Until a particular city doesn't have any more excess, and then the process just repeats until it's all been distributed. And and that 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 compensation, I think Jordan mentioned this. Is is we we base that on the average O and M cost of of maintaining that water supply. So either from storage from Lost Creek Reservoir, or if the water supply. Uh, was sourced originally from an irrigation district where the city is paying essentially a a assessment or an annual O and M cost for that.
Okay, I'm sorry, uh, Counselor Perry Miller, back to you.
Thank you. Um, I also just wanted to ask, um, I know that. The hope is that everyone will sign this by October first, um, but then in the report, it also said that from um. May to October twenty twenty-two will be a dry run. What does that mean?
Yeah, so that means um, what we'll do is we'll just pretend that we're gonna move forward with it. Uh, I guess pretend is not the right word. We will run the calculations, you know, and we will calculate if a city used excess in the summer. We would run the simulation to spread that out among the cities. Um, we would do the process for the accounting and the invoicing to see if it all works. No one would have to pay any fees or actually pay any money because of that. It's mostly testing to make sure that the administrative system setup. Flowed and made sense before we went live.
Thanks, Jordan.
You may have answered this, Jordan, already in your report, but I don't recall seeing it. Um, do you have to, do you have to be signed on to the IGA to be part of that assessment?
Adam, I'll let you take that one.
I'm not, I'm not sure I understand the question to be, do you need to be signed on in order to be?
Um, so it sounds to me like a dry run would provide some information on the other side, and um, is it required that? The IGA has to be signed in order for you to be considered part of that dry run?
Well, I guess I'd clarify that I don't believe that the dry run will necessarily provide us information. I think the dry run will uh provide us uh an opportunity to practice. In terms of the systems and accounting that we've set up. I think we've spent two years developing the information. I think it would be important to understand who was in and who was not in the IGA. In order to run the accounting in this system accordingly. So I think that's why we're trying to get people signed up. On board and then use that to move forward and get the systems in place.
Thank you, that makes perfect sense. Anybody else? I have a couple more questions, if I don't wanna, I wanna spread it around a little bit, if anybody wants to go first, though. Okay, um. So, uh, Jordan, this is more to you, um, and it's about the opinion letter that we got. Um, I didn't know, I couldn't tell from the answers that the questions that were asked were asked. In the way that got to the crux of the question. I know that's convoluted, but. Uh, I was really looking for information about. Um, I don't know if you recall, in the meeting that we had with um Brad. Uh, Brad is the Medford Water Commission Manager, right? Do I have that right? Okay, so in the meeting we had with Brad, one of the questions I asked was. Um. If we committed our water rights and. And, you know, I what I understand and haven't ever been corrected on is that the purpose of having the ample amount of water rights is so that you can continue to build out your city. So you have to show that you have the water rights in order to continue to expand. And I remember that was part of the conversation in the very beginning of this discussion when I was actually a part of the Water Coalition, when I was the member from Talent. How it took shape from there, I don't know for sure, and it could be different. But I was concerned that if other communities expanded using water rights in the shared agreement. And then for some reason, we needed to pull out of our agreement, how that would impact the city that had those rights, and would that give them any grounds to, you know, litigate or or, you know, something. And so that was kind of the crux of the question, and I don't know that I was very clear about it, to be fair. But so I read the opinion from the attorney and and it it was just a really general. I guess what would help me is if I could see the question and the and to make sure that the question was asked in the in the in the way that that got to the the crux of my concerns, the crux of my curiosity. So one of the things that I did pull up was just to help with this discussion is that in the council rules, if the council asks for an attorney's opinion. One of the one of the things that we need to be provided with, along with the memo, is the the full context of the conversation, you know, the full text to the attorney and the and the and the opinion back or the memo back. And and the I remember when we had this discussion, it was for this very reason is that sometimes the context of the question is important as well. And so it's hard for me to tell if they understood the question, the nature of the question when they were making the answer. And to me, that actually makes a difference in the answer, if that makes sense.
And I apologize for not having, that was a great point, Mayor, and for not having those questions. I have them up on my screen now. Would you prefer counsel for me to just send you a report with those questions? To share it live now? What's your preferred way to receive those questions that were posed?
I'm happy to receive them now. I just don't know that it's gonna, you know, I I'm not looking to stonewall. I just, I want to make sure, you know. I have a couple more questions as well, but I want to make sure that we all fully understand the impact of this decision, especially in light of the fact that everything's changing so fast with water. And I don't think anybody, I mean, the the curiosity I have is if anybody was to vote for this, would they be able to explain very clearly why they're voting for it, why they support it? And and I just, I don't feel that confidence myself. I'm trying hard to understand all of this, and it's a very, very big learning curve, even for somebody who knows a little bit about water. But I just have some some gaping concerns. And if you remember when I asked Brad that question, his answer was, we're still trying to work those details out. And that that alone is concerning. Anyway.
Yeah. Context to that one.
Sure.
I'm sorry. I I think we need to extend the meeting. I was gonna move to extend the meeting. I moved to extend the meeting till 10:00 PM or as if needed.
You have a motion? Is there a second? Yeah. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call, please.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Primorov?
Yes.
Counselor Greer?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Yes.
What she cares.
Okay, Jordan?
Um, yes, so just to to clarify for some verbal context, I did bring that concern back to the the IGA Creation Committee. And they, you know, did emphasize that the intent was not to ever have someone's water rights linked to another community's growth or any indirect tie to it. And we did actually change some parts of the language within the agreement to try to make that very clear. But I also recognize that intent is, you know, can always be different than impact, which is why I did go out to the Tonkin Torb Broadwater Specialist Attorney to verify that those changes were the level of effectiveness that we would want them to be. I will share these questions with you all. I do hope and I do think they do get to the root of your question, Mayor, particularly because I describe out to her the exact example of, you know, if they use our water right and they use it to expand their UGV, etc. So I'm hoping that helps when you guys see those questions.
Right.
But the other point that was made both by her as well as Adam's group, is there a requirement to prove that you have enough water to for expansion? If you're going to grow your community, is that you tied to public facilities? And so that is also another barrier that every community would face and is a little safety net around that.
Yeah, so when you say another, you mean that it's one of, right? It's one of, it's in addition to the the concern around the utilities as well, right? Water utilities.
I believe so, though. I'll lean on Adam for that one.
No, I think I think it's it's part of the process for other expansions is, you know, public facilities planning, you know, that would happen through the land use process. And I think your land use or your, you know, your attorney could probably describe that better than I could. What I wanted to add, Mayor, is that I I just want to reiterate what Jordan said that that this issue, Jordan did bring this back to the group, and that's why we added some belts and suspenders to the portion of the IGA that talks about termination if someone were to withdraw. We wanted to make it, even though throughout the IGA, we say nobody loses ownership of their water rights. We made it very clear that if someone were to withdraw from the IGA, there would no be, there would not be continuing obligation to share your water through this or any other framework. So so Jordan brought that back and we acted on that. And it sounds like the attorney concluded similarly that that was solid.
And can you provide me with the sections that that tightening of belt happened? And then also, are we going to look at the the full context of the communication with the attorney?
Great. I'll provide that in the same document.
Thanks.
Yeah, Mayor, if you're asking me what section, it's under the section, I think it's 11 termination withdrawal. And it's let's see.
Because we don't have, yeah, Adam, or yeah, specifically what I want to know is because we don't have a redlined copy, what you redlined, can you generally describe what you changed?
Well, we added some text under termination withdrawal, and it's it talks about withdrawal from this agreement will terminate the obligation to participate in water sharing. And but will not affect any preexisting agreements that may have been operative. So so we added this text, withdrawal from this agreement will terminate the obligation to participate in water sharing under this agreement. And again, that was, I think, additive to a bunch of text above that made it clear that nothing in this IGA would result in you know, changes to the ownership of of the water rights. And I think those are things hopefully that your attorneys reviewed.
Great. I'm feeling much more, I mean, I am feeling a little more confident about how this part of the conversation is going. So my my concerns were twofold. One of them was this concern, you know, this could be the downside. But my other concern, and I'm just going to put it frankly, I just don't feel like the city is being adequately compensated for the use of the additional rights. And I don't feel confident about that based on this conversation or any other conversation about kind of generally, you know, if there's an excess of water, then all six cities will like, do we have any understanding if that would actually impact water rates for people? I mean, would, you know, would it be significant enough where a city is who's not who doesn't have enough water rights is utilizing and sharing other cities' water rights, and somehow that could offset costs for our residents? I mean, it's a two, it's a, it's an expensive asset. I would I just was wondering, has there been any conversations that suggest that some of the cities with excess water rate rights should enjoy some compensation to benefit their community?
George, did you want me to take that one?
I'll I'll start with my understanding because I'd love to, you know, be on this journey along with my counsel. You know, this IGA in this specific the objectives of this IGA were never to have high levels of monetary exchange for water rights. I mean, us as a city, we always have the option to selling our water rights. But the design of this IGA was really developed a win-win both for those who had excess water rights as well as those who don't have enough water rights. You know, where will we get out of this is we will cover O and M costs for a portion of our water rights. So it's not going to be high level dollars that impact really much that the city does. The benefit to us is that we will have quicker certification of our water rights. The benefits, I think, is we're interacting regionally on a water topic. But because this agreement was never designed with that monetary compensation in place, it was not a part of the conversation in the last two years. And I will say that there is more excess water rights than water needs currently on the table. And if you look at that slide in the PowerPoint, you know, you can see that there's a lot of water on the table in this agreement, which also, you know, waters down the cost for not, for the lack of a better metaphor. Adam, did that, did that capture that understanding? Did you want to add anything?
I couldn't have said it better, Jordan, and I guess I would just add for the mayor and the council that yes, this has been a a topic of much discussion on and off through this whole process. And even in front of the city councils that you saw listed below in Jordan's presentation that have approved the IGA. So so this has been discussed a lot. And I think the the folks that have voted to support this have kind of understood what Jordan said, that it was never meant to be a a big compensation thing. And and one of the reasons is is you end up with 100% ownership of your water right. You're not changing that in any way. And you still have all the autonomy you have today going forward to be in this agreement, not be in this agreement, grow, not grow. So those are, for all of those reasons and for the framework we set up, that's the direction that the IGA took.
Any other questions?
I actually have a question for Adam. Now that's occurring to my mind, if you don't mind, Adam. I have, I have budget on the brain, so I don't remember this section. You know, I know we as a city could walk away from this agreement anytime if we sign on. But if we choose not to sign on now, will we have the opportunity in the future to be added on, or will the partner cities need to agree to offer us a place in the agreement?
Yeah, I think the way that I I mean, there we would be striving for unanimous agreement to modify the IGA in in any way, right? That that would be the goal. So if an entity were to not sign on and then later wanted to sign on, you know, that would just come in front of the the group. And we would work for, you know, hopefully unanimous agreement to modify the IGA.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, oh, sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
I was just gonna call for more questions if there was any other comments or questions. Council Perry Miller?
Thank you. So with I'm debating whether or not I want to get too into the weeds with this. I'm just wondering for like Attachment Six, that's all the like example numbers. Like, how accurate would those numbers be to what we could expect to be paying? Because I know that in it, it says that for operation and maintenance costs, Talent could be paying around $31,000. But then the amount of money that we potentially would be receiving from a city like Central Point for an entire year of sharing our water rates would be around $445. Are these just random numbers that were chosen, or are these close to accurate numbers? I know it says 2020, but I just wasn't sure, Adam, like, how how was this information gathered? And would that be something that we could expect to pay and receive?
Yeah, well, I'm I'm actually looking at Exhibit Six on my monitor. And so for those of you that aren't looking at it, one of the, one of the tables just shows the annual O and M cost for Ashland, Jacksonville, Phoenix and Talent. And tho- those are real numbers. You all have contracts through the Army Corps of Engineers for storage space in Lost Creek Reservoir, and you pay you paid all of these entities, paid what we call a a first project cost, which is to sort of get the storage space in the reservoir. And then the contract lays out what your annual O and M fee is to the to the agency. And so those are, those are real numbers in there. Okay. And then, and then if you scroll down further, it it also shows for Central Point and Eagle Point basically what their O and M cost is. So again, they had a first project cost of acquiring water rights from irrigation districts. And then when they got those water rights, they're obligated to continue to pay the annual assessment associated with those water rights. So these are also real numbers, counselor, from from information that we captured from all those cities and from the bills they paid. And then if you scroll down, we essentially rolled all those up to figure out kind of what's the average O and M cost per acre foot for the group as a whole, which is close to $24 an acre foot. And that's the number we landed on for this exchange of compensation, if you will. So those are all real numbers from real documents.
And I'd love to jump on that one because Council Prime, I chuckled because I had no idea how much water storage costs until I joined this group. So we pay 31,000 per year, no matter what, for the storage of our water. So that's just the cost of storing our water at the reservoir.
Okay, thank you. Is that I know you did the math for me, Adam, but is that $445 pretty accurate as far as like what we could expect to receive? I mean, I did the math. It looked like it checked out, but.
Yeah, so you're so you're scrolled down further to Attachment Seven.
Yeah.
And we're giving you an example and and this example, you know, was based on some real information as well. We didn't, you know, we didn't put any number of the date in there, but this this example is showing, you know, okay, how much water does everybody have? And who used less than what they have and who used more than what they have and how this whole accounting would work because we wanted the IGA to not just put it in words, but you know, some people are better at visualizing it right in a table. And so this $445 kind of shows you know, what that would have looked like in that example with, and it's basically Central Point, you know, taking the $2,225 that they owed. So that's the excess water that they use times, you know, the $24 of O and M per acre foot. And this shows how it's distributed. So I know with Jordan, we we played around with this and we we tried to project it forward a little bit, Jordan, remember to you know, we can play with it to about 2025 and say, well, what would it look like in 2025? And there, I think, I I don't remember the number, Jordan, I want to say it's more like 600 or 800. And so we kind of joked kind of amongst ourselves in this in this to sort of say, well, look, no one, no one is going to get you know, rich doing this. This is, this is not a scheme to, you know, to to repay the the value of of your water right. And 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 so, yeah, I think those numbers are on par with what you could expect. It's going to be a small amount of money over, you know, the next five to 10 years.
Just one follow up. Thank you, Adam, for explaining that. I feel like Jordan will probably be a, if she isn't already, she'll be a water rights expert pretty soon.
I think she's there. Yeah, yeah.
Um, I, you know, and I know that we've Um, I, you know, and I know that we've already talked about conservation. And there was that one little sentence that, you know, says that all the jurisdictions care about conservation. Um, I would hope that, you know, looking at the amazing amount of time and effort that all the jurisdictions have put into this conversation, that, you know, we could potentially take all of that and then, you know, talk about conservation next, um, with the number of partners and, you know, um, just because we're all in the same boat, so to speak. And that would be a really great, um, thing to focus on next.
Yeah, counselor, and I I I couldn't agree more. Um, and we're, I think we're at a kind of a new place in terms of the partnership and the collaboration that's going on, you know, through this this group. And so I hope we could just build on that, um, to to talk about water conservation and and other things as well. So, yeah, point, point well taken, and I think all the cities uh, would, you know, would not disagree with what you said. I think there's some momentum to do some some good things.
Well, Mayor, I think you're on you right now. Okay, um, so I just want to say that one of the things about being an elected official with other things going on as opposed to a staff member is that we, we, it's Swiss cheese for us. We get to approach this when we can, and we try to learn as much as we can when we have the time and capacity. And it's harder to immerse ourselves in these things. So on some level, when it gets to be this level of information in this complex, um, you know, there has to be some trust in the staff and and their understanding of it. And I, I feel like I'm, you know, personally speaking for myself that I'm getting there, but I, um, this has been such a difficult issue. Um, one of the things I wanted to ask is, has there been any, um, discussion about uh, taking any of the excess water compensation and utilizing it for, instead of compen- it doesn't sound like the compensation back to the cities would be, would be valuable. What about using it to develop, uh, some sort of grant fund or fund to help the other cities, um, with expensive fixes that they might have that that, um, you know, as a water conservation program? And we have a program similar, it's an excise tax where we we use our excise tax to, um, to fund a housing uh, affordable housing fund. And is there, has there ever been any discussion about come something along those lines? And I realize that's kind of a a stretch, but I'm just trying to figure out, you know, if we're not, if there's not compensation and there's no, um, there's no assurance, there's no. I think conservation is probably the the next, next thing that we, that I at least I'd want to hear some assurances on. And that seems like a a pretty good idea.
Yeah, that that just hasn't been part of the conversation. And again, at least the the framework that we've set up, it probably doesn't, you know, amount to to, you know, much money. It might be a few thousand dollars in a, in a year. Um, so that it might not get folks too far down the road, uh, you know, for the kinds of things you're thinking about. But, um, again, you know, just to repeat, uh, I think something that Jordan said is that all the cities do have water management conservation plans. Those are required by the state of Oregon. The city of Talent has one. They've been required by the state since about two thousand, so se- several communities are in their second or even third generation of those water management plans. And so I wanted the mayor and the counselors to know that I work on a lot of those. And over the years, the state of Oregon has really turned up uh, the heat, I guess I would say, in terms of what their expectations are. And so as you see these communities updating their plans like you have recently, I think you're gonna see more and more uh, the state really requiring some some real action in terms of programs and and those sorts of things. So I think this com- this conversation about conservation is inevitable. Mayor, I don't know if you were around, I I think it was maybe five or seven years ago, there was an effort to have a regional water conservation conversation. There was a grant that was provided by the state. There was some pretty good work done in terms of how that conservation work can be done regionally, because if talent's putting out a message on the radio about how to use water efficiently, you know, someone driving around in Phoenix might hear that, right? So so you guys are so close together that a regional approach to this kind of thing is, um, I think, I think we're poised for that kind of conversation.
Yeah, that makes sense. All right, well, um, I I'm gonna not have any more questions. Jordan, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just want to do a a, just a quick follow up on a couple of topics. You know, we discussed this at an earlier meeting, but I would be very interested in, you know, if we sign on to this agreement, if we start participating and seeing revenue come in, of deciding if we want to earmark that to go into the tree fund. Because, you know, trees are a way to, you know, conserve water. If we want to use that money to go into a um, some sort of program to benefit the committee, no matter how small. Um, I would love to to bake that into what we do on our side. Um, I also want to clarify for the decision point, you know, I think we're at a time where council does need to make a decision, not tonight, but in this journey of this process. I do think by next meeting, um, would be just great to know if we're on board or off board, um, since this, the partner cities that do sign on will start trying that implementation test. Um, so just note that the timeline is I will get all this information to you all, and I'll include it in next meeting's agenda packet. Um, if the council would like to push it to that June first meeting.
Well, I'm gonna say that, um, as far as that goes, I I, whatever the council wants to do, if they want to make a decision tonight, um, I feel satisfied that you asked the question I was looking for. I'm convinced that you did. And uh, and then based on knowing that, I've read the answer and it would answer my question then. Um, so, uh, in this case, it was the question that it was hung up on and not the answer, and I'm convinced that you've asked it. So, I mean, you know, I'll just leave it to the council. I'm, 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 I'm not gonna ask us to table it because it was a pretty straightforward, um, opinion. I mean, there's not a lot of information there, so. Um, and I was personally just looking for a particular question, so I'm just gonna leave it to the council what they want to do tonight. So I, let's just go ahead and ask that point blank. Do you guys want to table, or do you want to go ahead? Uh, does somebody want to make a motion? I'll entertain one if it one comes up, for sure. Uh, Counselor Clark?
I'd be fine, um, taking it up at the next mini- meeting and having a little more time to digest it.
Anybody else? Anybody else object to that? Counselor Perry Miller?
I don't object. That works for me.
You know, one question I forgot to ask was, is this a do, um, did, did you ask, uh, if we could join later if if we decided not to do this now? And what was the answer?
It would require unanimous approval by all the cities in the agreement.
And, uh, did I understand earlier in the conversation that if we don't do it, the water rights will be just fine without us?
Um, yes, there are enough excess water rights for the agreement to continue.
All right, uh, so if nobody objects, we'll just go ahead and continue this to the next meeting, a date certain. What is the date?
June one.
June one, okay. To June one. All right, thank, thank you, Adam, so much. Uh, Counselor Panomarif?
Um, I think you might, do you need a motion for that?
Go ahead.
I move to con- continue this, uh, this is, this matter until, uh, the next meeting, June first.
Thank you. A second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Panomarif?
Yes.
Counselor Grader?
Yes.
Counselor Byers? I'm sorry, I didn't hear Counselor Byers.
You didn't gone.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries, Mayor.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, Jordan, for working so hard on this. This is truly just a struggle for, I'm not speaking only for myself. I'm just having a hard time grasping it, and I appreciate the investment you're making. We, I know we want to make a good decision. Personally, I feel this is a huge responsibility, um, water rights. I just feel like even bigger moving forward. And so I'm really grateful for, for you holding our hand the way you are, because that's really what it's taking. And, um, you're really doing a, you know, a bang up job of it. I really appreciate it.
And I want, thank you all for going late tonight. I won it on this agenda, because I know June first agenda is gonna be packed with budget stuff. So I appreciate us getting it downloaded tonight.
Yeah, I think we can make a commitment to make a decision.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah. Um, okay. Next item on the agenda is
Other business.
Other business. Um, so really quickly, do we want to, um, can the thousand dollars be paid for out of the Parks Fund or the Arts Fund? Can it? This is my question.
Um.
The discretionary funding ask, seems to me that could qualify for part, for for Parks money or Arts money before we look at it for discretionary funding.
Um, we don't currently have it in the Parks budget for this fiscal year, so we could look at the T-PACs remaining funds, Harvest Festival remaining funds, where council discretionary has about six thousand, just under six thousand in it.
Yeah, there, they said they could do a reimbursement, so we could build it into the next budget, couldn't we? For Parks money, if.
Probably could.
Yeah, just because it's a Parks project, if it could be paid for by Parks money, it makes sense to me that it would be. So does anybody want to take this up now? What's the council's pleasure? Counsel Panomarif?
Um, if you're looking for objections, I have no objection to it being in the next budget in Parks.
Let's hope that, uh, something for discretionary funding comes up, because there's like six thousand dollars, right?
Yes, uh, just under.
Yeah, and if it doesn't get used, it can get rolled over into discretionary funding, can't it?
Um, yes.
Did last year, okay. All right, that's good to know. Um, all right, so, uh, the next item that came up was, uh, the tree. Is it against the rules? Do we know? Did anybody look to see if it was a traffic violation of any kind, or?
Yeah, we had, um, after Dan how, Dan came to the Urban Forestry Committee Mission Committee, the, some folks from there went out and redid the measurements to make sure. I had Public Works double check, and it technically does fall okay within our tree code. Um, as the treaty tree grows, it may impede or make changes, and so we'd have to be careful around trimming and the like.
It sure doesn't now, because I I looked at it when he called me the other day. And so I want to ask, um, and, uh, Counselor Park will get to you in a second. Um, uh, do you have the ability to look at the ODOT rule that he was talking about?
Yeah, honestly, I didn't know the ODOT rule existed, so I will look forward to looking into it and learning as I do.
Okay, great. And, uh, just for the record, uh, for transparency, he called me the other day, told me that he wanted a letter to exonerate him of liability. I convinced him that he didn't have liability in the first place, so he didn't need the letter. But if he needed to talk about it, he can come to council and talk about it on a non-agenda item, which is what he did. Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I just emailed a photograph of the, of the tree and the stop sign from the, uh, from the roadway um, that anyone can look at and, um, if someone wants to, uh, show that they can, but, um, I don't have any concerns personally.
I think just because he installed it as the record and said that there was a violation of a rule, we should look into it from a liability standpoint. But, uh, barring that, I don't want to have any more conversation about it. Okay, um, and then, uh, that's it for me. Anybody else have anything? For other future agenda items? We've got one minute. Uh, I will ask a quick question. I got a letter from a citizen who said that they got a rebate, uh, that they asked for a rebate on some kind of water conservation equipment that they installed. They live in Talent. Apparently, Medford had a program along those lines, and they believed they were supposed to get it because they were what Medford Water, um, customers. I didn't want to get into, well, not really, conversation with them. Um, but according to her, others, people in other cities have gotten it. So can can you look into it? And, um, I'll forward you the email, Jordan, and, uh, when you have time. You know, I realize that, um, uh, there's plenty on our plate, but, um, you know, if if those are something that our commu- community can get, we should probably let everybody know that. All right, that's it. Uh, so if there's nothing else, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn this meeting at ten o'clock. Thank you, everybody. Long night.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night's sleep.
Thank the staff for us, Jordan, for hanging in with us.
I absolutely will.
Okay.
All right, Hector, thanks so much. Sleep in tomorrow.
Good night.